I would like to bring this school meeting of the school committee to order. And welcome everybody who's in attendance and welcome our viewers who follow us on television. And at this point, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Maestis tells me that we're going to have a very pleasant introduction for the first item on our agenda this evening. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we are honored to have some guests from our sister city in England, Plymouth, England. And they have arrived, they arrived last night. Rob Powers, our Soul Studies Coordinator, actually has been very involved in planning a week-long professional development opportunity for our friends from England. So with that said, I'd like to invite them to the table this evening so they can actually be introduced officially to Plymouth. And then they can actually have verification that they actually came to Plymouth. It'll be on video and we can actually get you a copy of this and send it to you, to our friends across the pond.
When did Rob become a Plymouth, in England, from England?
So, Mr. Powers, welcome.
Yeah.
So, Rob has been very involved in, Rob, I'll let you explain what you've been working on.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, I'm Rob Powers, the Social Studies Coordinator here. I'm really excited to tell you a little bit briefly about this program that we've developed this year. We're calling it the Mayflower Teacher Exchange because we're hoping that it'll be a long-lasting exchange, both having, receiving teachers here and sending our teachers to learn about history and culture in Plymouth, England as well. But we've put together a really jam-packed week of professional learning for our colleagues from the UK. They're here to learn about Mayflower history from the experts and resources and different perspectives that we have here in Plymouth, Massachusetts, so that they can take what they learned this week and bring that back to Plymouth, UK, and develop lesson plans and curriculum for teachers at the 100 schools that they have in Plymouth, England. So, this is a pretty groundbreaking thing in that sense because they will be, they are the model for how this history will be approached in classrooms from all grade levels. So, today, they got a tour of the schools. We started at Plymouth North High School and then we visited PCIS, the Early Childhood Center. The, we got to go to Manheim Elementary and Plymouth South High School. So, they've seen a lot of what we have going on here in the district. They, a lot of collegial conversation about the way that education works and a lot of the similarities, really, which is, which is great. We did a walking tour of downtown Plymouth this afternoon. And then the next three days, we'll be partnering with Plymouth Plantation. And they will be putting together a three-day seminar on the various historical perspectives that they work with at the plantation. And then Friday, we're going to do the Colonial History in Boston and then wrap up with a session at Pilgrim Hall Museum on Saturday morning. So, it is a jam-packed six days. But again, we're really excited about the opportunity to, to really collaborate with the teachers from Plymouth, UK, on this history. And, and really, we're learning a lot, too, about how we approach the history of the Mayflower and, and the history of the early foundations of Plymouth when we teach it here in the Plymouth Public Schools as well, which is exciting. So, that is just in a nutshell, the work that's going on this week. And I'm just going to introduce everybody, I'm going to have them introduce themselves, actually, here on live television. And they'll tell you their name and, and what ages that they teach in Plymouth.
Rob, there's a microphone on the table if they could take the hand microphone.
Sure.
And make sure it's on.
Yeah.
You won't hear anything. It's mostly the cable. If it's not on, they'll come out and tell you.
Okay, great.
Okay, well, first of all, we had no idea we were going to be on TV. About half an hour ago, so apologies if it's a little bit jet-lagged. My name is James Sambers Perry. I am sort of Acting Deputy Head of Sixth Form, which is where we teach those who are 16 through to 18, 19. We all come from very different age groups that we teach. So, my role really is looking at how we can embed that at a much older age group, really. So, it's been fascinating today, coming along, seeing your high schools. They are very similar, but also incredibly different in a lot of ways as well. So, finding out how they're different, and we've already taken some improvements that we think we can make back at home. So, that's been really valuable, seeing some of the things that you do so well here. So, thank you for the opportunity to let us come along. I'll hand over to our next one.
Hello, I'm Sarah Jane Tustane. I'm a head teacher of a primary school in Plymouth. And it's Plimpton St. Morris, I believe. You've got a Plimpton just outside of Plymouth.
Yes.
We actually have 11 schools just in Plimpton. My school has got 204 students, starting from four up until 11.
Hi, I'm Vicky McCoy. I am a primary school teacher and I currently teach four and five-year-olds because in England, the first formal year of schooling is the year that children turn five. And I really enjoyed the early, the PEC Center today where we, I learnt about how you prepare children before kindergarten. So, I'm hoping to make a link there. But it's been really interesting learning about your schools.
Hello, I'm Heidi Longworth and I work in the same school as Sarah Jane, so she's my head teacher. I'm currently working in the Year Two class, so teaching children who are six and seven. And really enjoyed seeing the different schools, the way it's set up. My phone battery has died because I've taken so many photographs already. Not just for myself, but for colleagues in the school. So, we feel very grateful and fortunate to be here tonight, so thank you.
Well, we are very excited that you're here. So, let me put you on the spot since you are here live on television. Tell us, tell me something about an area that we can improve upon and perhaps tell me an area that you're going to bring back.
I'm not going to be brave enough to tell you an area you can improve upon. I'm not going to stick my head out and say that. One thing that we can bring back is we've been to Plymouth High School South, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And one thing I really liked down there is your vocational education is very much integrated with the students. So, with our Sixth Form, the way we have it is that if they're a vocational student, they tend to stay part of the school, but they will go to another institution to learn their vocational side. So, they're, they're quite independent and different to the rest of the students. We really like the way here, walking along one of your corridors, at one point, there was a window and in there was your car workshop and the students are just down there fixing what we hear as sometimes teachers' cars. We like that idea. But yeah, that vocational education, having it integrated, is a really strong approach to the way you do it.
Okay, thank you very much. My vice chairman just told me, give them a break, they've only been here one day.
Not even that.
Dr. Maestis?
You know, it's wonderful to see that you're here because we have been dreaming of doing this for quite some time. And it's wonderful to see you arrive. You're here engaged in really working on some curriculum items that we have really been talking about with the plantation probably for a couple of years. So, we're honored to have you. We hope you enjoy your time. When I was with you this morning, you know, I looked out the window and it was snowing. And I told you by 1:00 it should clear up and it did, but it was really cold. But it was, from my understanding, you had a good kickoff and I'd like to thank Rob for all his planning. And I'm sure the rest of the week will go fine. And just to give the school committee a heads-up, we do have an invitation for the school committee to have a send-off for you on Thursday. And that'll be in South Plymouth, I believe, at, where are we going to do that?
At Plymouth North.
At North.
Institute of North.
Plymouth North, yeah. So, we'll, we'll send you off and hopefully you'll maybe answer a couple of other questions that they have for you.
If I make it Thursday night, I'm going to ask you that question.
It won't be on TV.
Comments from any committee members? Okay, well, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Scholz.
I just have a quick question. Like, how, what was the selection process to pick the four of you to come over here?
Question.
Interested.
There was an advert put out to all the schools for an application process. And we were given a brief and we had to make some resources and submit them along with a sort of a personal statement of why we are interested in the project. Then some people were selected for interview and we had an interview. Sarah Jane could tell me the, the names of the people who interviewed us, I can't remember off the top of my head. And, and then a few days later, the four of us were selected.
If I can just add very quickly, too. So, it's great that they went through that rigorous process, but I have to give them credit as well because in the three months or so leading up to their visit, we created some modules in an online classroom format to help prepare them for the work they'll do this week. And they've been amazing. They've been hungry for it. The online engagement leading up to this week has been phenomenal. So, I don't know how they could have found four better teachers.
And Mr. Powers, thank you so much for all the time and energy you've put into this as well. It's much appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the next item, is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? Yes, please come down and identify yourself.
Glad to see such enthusiasm at the beginning of your meeting and I, I know it will continue. Pat McCarthy, a longstanding town meeting member from Precinct Five, currently Vice Chair. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments on some positive notes as we head towards Saturday in town meeting. And it's not a lecture or anything like that, so. I just wanted to say that over the years, I've really appreciated the transparency by which the school department and the town government proceed ahead through the fall into the spring in developing their budgets and the preparation that goes into that and the availability for all of us as citizens to get a knowledge of that information and get our questions and concerns answered prior to going to town meeting on Saturday. That much information is posted on your website and on, certainly on the town website. And there are a lot of cross-links that we can gather that information. And I feel that if those of us that are voting on Saturday in the legislative body have a responsibility to try to gain that knowledge as best as we can. Certainly, we don't have to go to all the meetings, but I certainly try to follow the issues at hand, especially nowadays on TV. Years ago, when we first started, of course, we had to always go to Town Hall to find out anything. So, we can sit at home and learn. So, in, in light of that, I just feel there's been lots of debate within the groups at the meetings. A lot of questions have been answered to those that had them, whether it was from the school committee members to the Board of Selectmen, to the Finance Committee members. And in light of other articles, the Planning Board and the other groups that are overseeing what we're going to be voting on, not just the budget, but other items. And I do think that we've been able to get those questions answered. I especially, as a town meeting member, appreciate the full reports that we have been given, especially from the Finance Committee. And in light of your group tonight, especially from the Finance Committee Subcommittee on Schools. And I want to really thank those members, especially Harry Helm, the chairman, who has spent a lot of time and is very thorough in addressing some of the questions or concerns some of us would have. And the, I feel that, I really do feel that they've tried the best they can to fully vet the items and the subcommittees for the other sections of town meeting, fully vet as best as they can. So, with regards to the school committee budget, just wanted to let you know that I'm supporting it fully as-is and that I plan to do that at town meeting. And I'm encouraging other members of town meeting to research and investigate and try to get any answers question, and any answers to their questions on the budget. I, I appreciate the way that your book is laid out. And it's, it's a little confusing, but if you really look at it and it's, people at home don't get a chance probably to see what a nice booklet that we get with the whole budget, that we get that. And that some of the highlights that I wanted to mention, especially from, so people know where I'm coming from, is that 78% of the school budget is with regards to salaries and people to teach our children. The, with regards to the observations from, from the FinCon report is that in light of state of Massachusetts, there are 404 local and regional school districts and we're the 15th largest in the state of Massachusetts. And that in 2016, the last time that was reported, to my knowledge, the last time it was reported, as stated in the FinCon book, is that we were ranking 256 out of 325 in the average salary for teacher salaries. And I think sometimes that's a misnomer out there that we're overpaying, which I certainly don't think we are. The, with regards to the budget, I, I fully support that we need to provide the same level of service to the students. And that's what you've done in, in presenting the budget. And I know that the selectmen have supported it and the FinCon is supporting, supporting that. I really, and with regards, I'm especially proud of, and it was just noted, of our students having such a great tech program at South High School. And I know that there is a higher, and sometimes I think there's a misnomer out there when people are looking to the ratio of teachers to students, is that in a good tech program, the, you need more teachers per, in that type of program to accomplish the goals of the programs. The special, and also with our, I feel, our very inclusive special ed program. The same thing, there's more services that we need to provide. And I know that Harry has researched that and spent a lot of time, you know, addressing that issue as questions have come up, that we have been able to have an inclusive sped pro, special education program within our schools, especially, I know with our Autism Spectrum Program, that we've been able to have our students stay in Plymouth to go to school. And that's been a cost savings, not only a cost savings, but an emotional and an educational goal for our students to be able to go to school here. And that the average cost of those students being schooled here is for special needs. And that's a federal and state mandates that we provide services for all students and that we're not selective. We have to provide it and we should be providing it at home here. The average cost to have them stay here is $18,000, according to the information we've received. And it's an average cost of out of district when we can't have them stay here. The average cost is $75,000. And I do think that sometimes, as we're proceeding ahead, I, I believe that as, as a grandparent, and my two sons went to Plymouth schools and received good educations and I certainly tracked what they were doing, so they do know that. But that we, as a community, we are working on behalf of our whole community, the children and all the citizens in this town. And as we go to town meeting, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. And also, I'm thanking the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the other groups that do this out of the goodness of your hearts and your wits. And that's, I, I don't really want to go on and on, but I wanted to just let you know some positive comments as we head to town meeting and our caucuses, this, the rest of the caucuses this week.
Okay.
And thank you very much.
Mrs. McCarthy, on behalf of the committee, we thank you for being here this evening and we, we thank you for your diligence and energy that you've put forth all these years as a town meeting representative.
We're well-represented, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee? Please come down, follow in and identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. For the record, my name is Dale Weber. I'm a town meeting representative from Precinct Three. I've been one of those lucky individuals for a quarter of a century now. And for disclosure purposes, I also represent over 125 school employees performing in the public service for the school committee and the taxpayers of Plymouth. Pat McCarthy stole some of my thunder. I won't repeat the honor it is to serve at town meeting and to go through the budget and the process. And I don't have to preach to the choir here, but we all know that that budget process starts in October. And here it is March. There's been many meetings held to outline the budget for anyone, any constituent of the precincts or any taxpayer in Plymouth to attend those meetings or just to tune in. And I'm fortunate for cable access because a lot of times that keeps me in front of the TV instead of coming out here. And it's convenient that way. You, you also get a chance to replay some of the meetings if you miss something. So, I will say that different town meeting members take different approaches to the budget. Myself, I'm, I'm either at a meeting or watching a meeting five nights a week. And the information is readily available for anyone. And I kind of came here with reservations tonight as far as coming up here to speak because I was looking for the maker of the motion that's slated to, to cut nearly $3 million from the school committee budget. And I was looking forward to hearing his comments and his presentation because nowhere leading up to this process have we been enlightened by what this gentleman is proposing to, to cut. I held the Precinct Three caucus last week because I'm the Vice Chair of my precinct and my chairman was unavailable, he was out of state. And I had nobody from the maker of this motion show up to discuss it. It's almost like it's straight, straight out of left field. And many of you may remember at our last annual town meeting, and speaking of a proposal coming from out of left field, there was a town meeting member that stood up from the floor and wanted to cut, I believe, close to $30 million from the school department budget. So, it's not the first time that we've dealt with proposals coming out of left field. And I'm very confident that with Mr. Maestis's leadership and the school committee leadership that you will handle this accordingly. And we look forward to that. We look forward to the debate. And like Pat McCarthy said, I appreciate all the disclosure that is included in the budget process. Now, I know that the school department budget is a, a lot more voluminous than what we receive at town meeting. I'm appreciative of that because I'm appreciative of the, the summary that we get. But that summary can easily lead us to ask questions on the details. And that is available to any Plymouth voter. And I know that anytime I've made a request, the school department gets back to me very promptly with accurate information and sometimes takes the wind right out of your sails. So, that's what I'm looking forward for you to do at this coming town meeting. So, thank you for your diligence and thank you for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Thank you for coming here and speaking this evening. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the school committee? I don't see any other hands. I'm going to move off of this agenda item. And we have representatives both from Plymouth North and Plymouth South this evening. And we'll start with Plymouth North.
Thank you. Paying the College Bill seminar is being held this evening from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Plymouth North High School in the Performing Arts Center. The seminar will provide valuable guidance to families as they make a decision on where to attend colleges. Topics will include an overview of different types of financial aid, an explanation on, of how to calculate the balances due at each college, and methods of paying the college bill and minimizing debt. The Plymouth Public Schools Guidance Department will be offering a financial aid night on Thursday, May 3rd, at Plymouth South High School from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. In order to take the SATs on Saturday, May 5th, you must register on the College Board website by Friday, April 6th. Students are encouraged to visit their guidance counselors with any questions. Congratulations to Nick McNamee for being selected as Boston Globe's All-Scholastic Myler for the winner. Also, congratulations to the following winter student athletes who are selected as Patriot Ledger All-Scholastics. Jayquan Leonard, Boys Basketball. Kelsey Ruthier, Girls Hockey. Nick McNamee, Boys Track. Caitlin Haley, Girls Track. Four-by-200-meter relay, Girls Track. Kaylee Driscoll, Taisha Hatch. Jaden Tavakilian, Margaret Hart. And Elizabeth Marshall. The World Language Department was excited to host the Pulsera Project from May 12th to the 23rd. The Pulsera Project is a nonprofit organization that employs Nicaraguan and Guatemalan artists by selling their hand-woven bracelets and bags in schools across the US. All proceeds go directly to providing health care, housing, education, clean water, and et cetera for impoverished artists and their families. With support from many students and staff, the Plymouth North High School World Language Department successfully wrapped up two weeks of the Pulsera Project last Friday. And together, we sold over 200 pulseras and raised over $1,000 for artists in Nicaragua. Senior Dinner Dance tickets are on sale for seniors only from May 2nd to April 13th. The cost is $20, is $75. Check your money order may payable to Plymouth North High School Student Activities Fund. The Dinner Dance will be held at the Indian Pond Country Club on Tuesday, May 29th. Spring recess will begin on Monday, April 6th and will go through Friday, April 20th. Third-term report cards will be sent home with students on Friday, April 13th. 2018, 2019 bus applications were sent home electronically in order to take advantage of the discounted rate. Please pay by the end of the school year. This year, every student must fill out a bus application and confirm if they are a bus driver, walker, or a driver. Please contact the main office if you did not receive a copy. The Junior Prom will be held on Friday, May 18th, at the Seacrest in Falmouth. Prom tickets will go on sale Monday, April 9th for $85. Check your money order only. Tickets will be sold at all lunches on A and B days and after school in Miss Brady's room at 3:46. Guest forms are available in Student Services. Southern Mass Credit Union is offering a $1,000 scholarship to qualifying seniors who are members of the Credit Union. Students should visit the Credit Union and pick up an application. The deadline is April 30th. Plymouth North High School welcomes two teachers and 10 students from Spain. We hope they enjoy their time here. During spring recess this year, Plymouth North has many groups traveling to other countries to learn about their cultures and customs. Students and staff will be traveling to France, Spain, the Galapagos Islands, and a service learning trip to the Dominican Republic. We wish them a bon voyage and a safe journey. Due to, due to the weather, our school missed the Student National Walkout Day. The Social Studies Department will be offering to all students that turn 18 on or before November 6th, 2018, an opportunity to register to vote. Eligible students should stop by a table and fill out a registration form at all lunches. We decided to have stations for students to register to vote to show that even though the walkout wasn't able to happen, it's unfortunate it wasn't able to happen, there are still many things that they could do and there's still ways they can use their voice and to have action with what they do. Another plan that we have in place is to possibly have another table next to the table where you can register to vote and have little slips of paper and instructions on how to write a letter, a meaningful letter to either your local officials or your national officials. And we also, we do have many ideas to sort of substitute the walkout. That can be beneficial because we don't want it to be seen as, well, that's over, on to the next thing. So, we want our students to have the opportunity to be able to use their voices. And then another idea we were toying with was the student breakfast that we had with Dr. Maestis. Maybe having a concept like that after school or during K Block where there's administration. And it could be like, it could be relaying to recent gun violence issues in the news or really anything in the school being like, if you have issues or you want to see change in a certain area or you're concerned about something in your school, you can come approach us and use your voice in this manner and know that at Plymouth North, we're always listening.
That's, that's wonderful. You know, I love that phrase, use your voice. I love that phrase, use your voice. Very important, and I think those two tables are going to be excellent. I just want to make one slight correction. If I heard correctly, I think you said spring break starts on April 6th. It actually starts on April 16th. I don't want the entire 10 to be...
It probably said April 16th.
Okay, great. Okay, Megan, please.
Yeah, February the 13th, they get off. But they have to come back on the 23rd. Sorry. Including the weekend, that gives you 10 days. Don't need extra minutes.
Hey, we'll take it. So, spring sports are underway despite the weather and hopefully the first athletic contest will get started this week. Congratulations to Joey Van Winkle, who has won the 2018 Mr. Plymouth South. A portion of the proceeds raised by the event will go to Joey's Choice of Charity, the Friends of Karen, a pediatric cancer research fundraising group. The all-town band concert has been rescheduled for tomorrow, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at Plymouth North. The high school students will perform both the elementary and middle school all-town bands. Our annual credit-for-life fair will take place on April 10th at the Hotel 1620. We had a successful week of Grade 10 English MCAS. South will pilot the English MCAS 2.0 on May 2nd, along with Biology MCAS 2.0 on May 29th and 30th. The regular Math MCAS will take place on May 23rd and 24th. Congratulations to senior and early education and care student Caroline Dusso, who was named the 2018 Outstanding Technical Studies Student. Caroline will be recognized at the annual dinner at Mechanics Hall in Worcester next week. The Graphic Design Tech Program will have a display of photography Tuesday or Thursday, April 12th, in the Black Box Theater. The exhibit will take place from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Save the date, an evening of one acts, a combined Plymouth North and Plymouth South visual performing arts event, will be held at Plymouth South High School, April 27th and 28th. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen and Governor's Office for recognizing the state championship hockey team. Two wonderful events for the players, including coaches, managers, and our senior vocalist, Lily Alvarez, who sang the national anthem at the State House. And today, we had our rescheduled walkout, so I just want to say a little bit about that and the feedback that I kind of gathered from students. So I am here representing the senior class as well as Plymouth South as a whole. Our walkout consisted of students going to the gym and sitting while 17 students held pictures of the Parkland Schools shooting victims and read off the names and ages, as well as followed by a moment of silence. While this decision was made to reschedule the walkout with good intentions, they were misguided in the product that was seen. Students were disappointed in the outcome of this event. It was intended to honor the victims and have Plymouth South stand in solidarity, but it ended up feeling or seeming forced. Bella Chung, Megan Gallerani, and I helped organize it and wished to cancel the walkout last week as we felt that the rally downtown played a large role in the healing process. The rally on the town green was fantastic. I went and felt exhilarated, and today, I didn't feel that way. I'd like to apologize to students of Plymouth South who were hopeful to have their voices heard regarding this issue during the walkout today. It was our original intention to have a stronger student voice in the event, but the original snow day on March 14th and the weather today led to the change in the walkout format and ended up with frustration on our end. We did have the Google form, though, which students did fill out, and we ended up having 184 entries for it, which we'll in turn summarize and send to local and state representatives so that our students' voices are heard, to make sure that our voices go beyond the walls of Plymouth South in hopes to make a difference in our world. And we also have Miles Legrow here to talk about the rally.
Miles, please come to the table.
Hello. I'm a junior at Plymouth South High School. My name's Miles Legrow, and I was one of four organizers from organizing the March for Our Lives in Plymouth, Massachusetts. I did this mainly because I felt that a lot of people in Plymouth, because we don't usually see political rallies like this, that we should be heard just as much in bigger cities where, like in Boston, they just always gather on the common. And I thought it would be great to bring both Plymouth North and Plymouth South and anyone together to voice their opinions. So we had a turnout of over 400 people, and it went really, really well. I was invited here by two members at the indivisible Plymouth meeting to talk. And it went really well. We had a victim tribute where 17 students from Plymouth schools read for each victim and told their story more than just their name and their age so that we remember their humanity and not that they're just a statistic now and what happened to them to honor them. And then we also highlighted student performances that people signed up to perform at the rally to show that each, all of these kids and adults that were unfortunately taken away from this world have, they all had talents and they all were, they all had talents and they all had stories, and we could be taken away too, our talents could be taken away too. So it was really just a platform for kids to come together across our community and talk and just really make their voices heard, like Megan and Eddie have both said. But it went really well, and I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to talk about it because it was really, it was really good.
Miles, just stay there a second. Ms. Badger and Ms. Hunt?
I just, you know, I had a chance to hear you speak at the indivisible Plymouth meeting, and I was at the rally. And I think it's really important, and I know that, you know, I heard you a little bit the other day, there's a lot of noise out there and it's really hard to separate some of the comments and everything that's going on. And I think it's really important for the community to know that at these events, just like your event today, you know, we're giving people the opportunity to voice their opinion, whatever it is. You know, we didn't, nobody said what you had to stand for when you went to these things, and I think it's really important that people know that. People know that, you know, I think the main thing was, the takeaway was to mourn these students. And I really loved the fact that you didn't just name off names, you actually spoke about the students, and we knew a little bit about all 17, not students and teachers. And I know there was a lot of work on it that went into it. So congratulations. I've always been a strong advocate for advocacy, and I think that, you know, all of you students, no matter what your opinions are, whatever your voices are, you're making it heard, and that's the most important thing. So just, you know, don't let anybody get you down.
Thank you.
You did a great job, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I concur with Ms. Hunt. She said most of what I wanted to say, but everybody who spoke and just the actions that you're doing within the schools to make sure that people's voices are heard and people understand that their voices are important regardless of what, like Ms. Hunt said, what they believe in, but that their voices are just as important as anybody else. And, you know, if you feel one way, then there's somebody else out there who does, and somebody needs to speak up. And you did that by organizing the rally, by organizing the walkouts, but you gave people voices, and I think that is incredible. And the way that everything was put together and you saying that you wanted to memorialize and not make them statistics, you wanted to remember them. And I think there wasn't a dry eye on the green because you looked at every student, every person around you, and like you said, their talents can be taken away. What they give to our society could be taken away, and we never know. So, but thank you, thank you so much, all of you, for what you've given the town of Plymouth.
And I would close by saying, Megan and Ed and Miles, keep it up. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Old business, are there any committee members with information regarding any old business items at this meeting? We'll be doing a review fairly soon on them, but right now, nothing coming? Okay, new business. Ms. Badger.
So after our, I talked to Dr. Maestis about this earlier this week, last week, and after we discussed about the therapy dogs that are coming into the school, I had another, I had someone approach me about wanting to bring another therapy dog into another school and that they already had the dog and it was something they were interested in. And I think that this is something that's going to be coming to our attention, and people are going to be knocking on the door like, I have a therapy dog. My Ellie could be a therapy dog too, but she wouldn't be a very good therapy dog. So I think it's kind of important. She'd be jumping all over you. I think what's really important is that, and I'm sending this, I'm making work for others, but the Policy Subcommittee, I think it might be good to go back and see if we can create a policy on what makes a therapy dog. Because just because your dog has, you can buy something on the internet or you can buy a certificate on the internet, doesn't mean that it is an actual therapy dog. So I just think putting it out there is something we should probably work on.
Any members with a reaction to that?
I was just actually going to chime in on that because it was just on the news last week, the airports are dealing with the same thing and influx with, you know, animals that are social promotional support, like a peacock in an airport on a plane. I know this is kind of a hot topic, so wherever we can clarify and certainly stay ahead of, I think that would be good.
And I think it's important that it's not what the student brings in, I think it's the faculty member that is bringing it to the school. And what I've heard, you know, like whether or not, you know, a student can have a therapy dog because that's what that student needs. And that, I don't think we can really guideline, that is, you know, health and more than, you probably know about that. But I think it's the bring into the school and having it being part of the school community that's what I'm talking about.
I feel your request makes a lot of sense to send it back to the Policy Committee. But I would caution the Policy Committee that the American Disabilities Act is very, very, very clear and very specific that service dogs, we can never question their training, we can never question their service, we can't ask for any documentation. Service dogs have all the authority of the person who handles them. So the Policy Committee has to be very careful because it's an area that we have no authority. And the federal legislation says that if you have an official service dog, you can bring that dog anywhere, anytime, anyplace, and should never be questioned. So the development of this policy has to be very, very careful.
And that's what I want, because I'm not questioning anybody, I'm thinking about the internet where you can print off the certificate. And that's why I think we just need a little bit of clarity on what we're going to let into the school. But I do understand what you're saying because, of course, people need what they need and they have to have it, but...
Okay. So we'll pass that back to the Policy Committee and good luck to Pat. Anything else on the new business? Okay, we're going to move off this agenda item now and report some proposals by the superintendent, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, I have a number of things to report on this evening. Just a reminder, I think you're all aware that Saturday, we have a big day. We'll be meeting at 7:30 in the teacher's dining room at Plymouth North High School. And I think you all are aware of a motion that was made last week in reference to the school department budget, and that motion was accepted by the town moderator and will be heard on town meeting on Saturday. That motion is to reduce the school budget by $2.8 million, and it is really, it's $2,832,405, which is basically a 3% cut to the budget. As you remember back to the budget presentation that we had here in November, this budget represents same level of service budget that you approved. The proposal, the motion is to reduce the budget to a level-funded budget. Basically, this budget is to take us to the current year's expenditure. That provides a number of difficult points for the school district because within every budget, there are a number of escalators in that budget which really trigger, which has triggered this budget. If you go back to the meeting that we initially presented the budget, I was very clear with the school committee and very clear with members of the Finance Committee that were here in attendance, that I gave very strict direction to our principals that they were to develop a budget that was same level of service, and if there were any extraordinary expenses that we need to consider, we would consider them. As you can see, the budget that we presented was, it included contracts, which is primarily the increases that you see for salaries, contracts that we have with our bus company, contracts that we have for our special education transportation provider, and we have a number of other contracts that we have for special education services. So one of the dilemmas that we have when a $2.8 million cut is being proposed is there are a number of features within the budget that are mandated pieces that we have to fund regardless of what the cut is being proposed. For example, we have a $2.8 million proposed cut for special education, transportation, and utilities for next year. These are escalators that are in the budget that even if this proposal survives town meeting floor, we still have to come up with these funds. We have to come up with $634.86 just for sped transportation, excuse me, special education, transportation, utilities. Those are those three areas combined. That's how much that's going up, just in contracts that we have.
Could you repeat that number again, please?
Okay, so add that on top of the 2.8. Okay? That's another addition that we have to consider because we have to, we have to fund those no matter what. Those are going to be additions, which means we have to make even deeper cuts to actually fund those. We also have another $63,000 in special education costs for monitors that we need to provide for our students, and they have contractual obligations that are, that have to be adhered to. So those are a couple of areas that are, make this even a tougher proposal. I might add that of the $2.8 million that is looked at, I'm not sure how many people realize that the school department budget, the entire supply and material lines for the entire district is $3 million. That basically, that's what we have for every supply and material for every single one of our schools. When you take a look at those consumable pieces, there aren't a lot of other things that we have in the budget. We have professional development that's mandated through the contracts. If you take a look at the contracts that we have for our teachers, there are dollar-line items that we have to insert into the budget to ensure that we offer professional development. Those are included in the budget. What I'm trying to get at is, in order for us to make the cuts that would be required with a $2.8 million cut, we would be cutting about 75 staff to be able to make that happen. Let me break that down for you. In order for us to meet this guideline, we would use an estimated salary of about $55,000. That's the number that we would use for a staff cut. In order for us to meet the guideline dollar-wise, we'd have to cut about 50 staff members, okay? Which would give us what we're looking for. But on top of that cut, we would have to incur unemployment, and the town would have to pay unemployment for those individuals. So the rule of thumb for every two employees that you lay off, you have to lay off a third to be able to pay the unemployment, which would make it another 25 staff members that we'd have to cut to be able to fulfill that obligation. Now, keep in mind, I've been in this district for a long time, I've been on town meeting floor arguing or debating difficult situations, I've been in front of the Boris Selectman Town Meeting, and I will tell you that the way that we would approach this is we would take an even look across the entire district of how we would address this if it were to happen. I would take direction from the school committee as to information they would provide to me. And I've been asked since this proposal was put on the table, how would you approach this? What would you do? How would the school committee approach this? And I said, you know, the biggest thing that the school committee could do was have a meeting, and we'd have to come up with a timeline and a plan of actually executing this. And there have been, there have been days here in Plymouth that we have had tough budget decisions to make. I recall many years ago where the Plymouth band at the time, we didn't have a North and South band, we had the Plymouth band, and we had, there was a proposal to cut several hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, and it was a big deal at Town Hall. And one of the things that I will tell you, and I would not want to go down that road and disrupt the bands and the athletic programs, we would take a look at a holistic approach of how this would impact all schools across the district and not target one program or one area. I think we would need to do that. I know that's stepping ahead quite a bit in the process, but I just wanted to give the school committee some level of understanding of how we would go about that process. It would be very difficult because there are a number of hard decisions that would have to be made. Cutting 75 people would be an arduous task, and it would be difficult for the public schools. And I have said that publicly and so on. So with that said, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, I present the budget a total... I present the budget a total of 21 times a year, okay? Just want to be clear. I present the budget to the community 21 times in a school year. I present at every single school in the district to all staff members. I've done it for nine years in a row. This will be my 10th. I do it to give our school community of stakeholders, educators, an idea of what it costs to run the Plymouth Public Schools. In addition, I present the budget to you for the very first time in November. It is, that meeting is here in conjunction with the Finance Committee Subcommittee for Education. After that, it's presented to the Board of Selectmen. After that, it's presented to the Finance Committee. After that, the Finance, the Board of Selectmen holds a hearing, actually, excuse me, the Finance Committee holds a hearing and those reports are then accepted. So, for the community to get information on a line item, you know, with detail, at a line item premise, you know, our budget is extremely detailed. And I just want to let everyone know that I work really hard. Our office works extremely hard to try to be as transparent as we can possibly be and present a budget that people have input and that input we consider. And there's dialogue that centers around that. I actually have the opportunity, and Mr. Costin, myself, and some members of the school committee have actually met with the Finance Committee Subcommittee for Education. This year, we met with them for three hours at central office and we reviewed the budget. And on top of that, that meeting is an open meeting. The majority of the meetings that I've described tonight, with the exception of the staff meetings at the district, are open meetings. So, if anyone out there would like to find out more about the budget, I would encourage them to come next year ahead of time. And they can hear it. The principals are here, cost center managers are here. They can actually get a good understanding of what it takes to run the school budget. So, I just wanted the school committee to know that our approach heading to town meeting is to answer questions. Our approach ahead of town meeting is to cover all the caucuses that have not been presented at this point. So, we have a calendar of precincts that will be meeting. Mrs. Frye is not here tonight because I sent her over to the Loring Center because precincts one and two are meeting tonight. On Tuesday night at 7:30, Precinct Five will be meeting here at PCIS. I will be here. Dr. Sorenson will join me at that meeting. Wednesday night, we have Precinct Eight, which will be in Cedarville, the community room at the firehouse. Dr. Sorenson will be there. And I know other members will be joining us well to some of these meetings. On Wednesday night, Precinct Ten is meeting at 7:00 PM and Mrs. Frye will cover that. And I believe Mr. Morgan and Mrs. Burgess will be attending that as well. If we can go down to Precinct Twelve, South High School, Mrs. Frye will be there with Precinct Twelve at South High. And that begins at 7:00.
What night is that?
That is on Tuesday, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, 7:00 o'clock.
Yes. And then on the 15th is Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the Stone, the Stonebridge Club at Pine Hills. And I will be there for that meeting, which is Precinct Fifteen. I know Mr. Begley will be there as well. So, with that said, I know there are, there's a lot of discussion around town, a lot of discussion on social media about the budget and this and that. And I will tell you, I'm proud about the work, of the work that we do to present a budget. I think we take a responsible approach. We are presenting a 3% budget increase over prior year. And we do do a chart that demonstrates what those budget increases look from year in to year out. And I think we have been very responsible with the direction that we've given our cost center managers to present a budget that we believe can pass town meeting floor because we did the hard work ahead of time. So, with that said, Dr. Sorenson, I'm not sure if you want to open up to more discussion on this, but I have a couple of other items that I'd like to present.
Before you move on, committee members with any follow-up to Dr. Mastis's report. I would say, I speak for the school committee. It is a very transparent budget. And as Mr. Weber said earlier at the meeting, not only do you present it 21 times, it's also presented live on television. So, there are many opportunities for members of the community to view this transparency. So, we're confident in your work. And I also would like to add that we also feel very confident that town, at least I feel personally, that town meeting will look at this very carefully and make really the best decision for the children of Plymouth.
And Dr. Sorenson, to that point, I think it's really important that the tough questions are asked because we'll answer them, we always have. I've never shied away from a question. We never have. And I know there are a lot of, there's a lot of difficulty circling around the schools and the quality of schools and too much money. And you know what? There's a very, very strong movement of quality running about in the Plymouth Public Schools. And we are going to work very hard and smart to demonstrate that this community has great value in its school system. With that said, I'd like to move on. I received an invitation to attend the Board of Selectmen's meeting on April 24th to discuss the conditions of our school buildings. That was an invitation that was sent to me. I think it was on the agenda last Tuesday evening because there's some, they want some information on how, are there any concerns, long-term, short-term concerns with our school buildings? So, I'll present to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Montrow will join me to be able to answer any questions and actually present our buildings and kind of give them population, the work that's been done recently in a time span. And then kind of give them an outlook on what, on what we see happening. You know, some windows, doors, roof replacements and things of that nature. And we'll be presenting that information. So, with that said, I think I've said enough.
That was April 24th for that meeting? Did you say the 24th of April for that meeting?
Seven, yes.
I'm sorry, say that again?
24th of April, 7:00 PM.
Okay. Moving to the next agenda item this evening is retirements. Are you going to handle that, Dr. Mastis?
Yeah, there are no retirements tonight.
There weren't any when I first looked at the list, okay, that's good. Correspondence, Mr. Morgan.
Just waiting for my screen to catch up. Give it a help. We do have a correspondence this evening. There's one piece of correspondence to share. A thank you letter from Allison Reardon, Science and Technology Engineering Coordinator, to the St. Vincent de Paul Society at St. Peter's Parish in recognition of their generosity in providing scholarships for Plymouth's children to attend the highly sought-after camp invention for the fourth sold-out season in a row. Mrs. Reardon further commented, commended the St. Vincent de Paul Society for increasing their scholarships by four this year for a total of six, a remarkable indication of their commitment to the academic enrichment of Plymouth's children.
Thank you very much. The next item is to get an update on our solar rooftop contracts. And there were two contracts in the email, I mean, in the, not the email, well, anyway, there were two contracts. Dr. Mastis?
Yes. Tonight, we have the anticipated contract for the rooftop solar at Plymouth South High School. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Costin for his ongoing weekly work to actually get this contract to the table of the school committee. Keep in mind that there are a number of items that really have pushed the agenda with this because we want to be in line with the opening of the fields at Plymouth South High School. And we wanted this project to be in tandem for that project to move forward. So, Mr. Costin is very proficient in negotiating these contracts. He's, this is probably, I don't know how many of these he's worked on, but it demonstrates that his diligence. And I also think the work that we have moving forward is a good project. So, Mr. Costin is going to preview a little of the work tonight. We do have a representative from Amoresco who will be the provider of services for this contract. And they are here for any comments the school committee may have. But at this point, I'll turn over to Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Costin.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Edward Blenicki to please come up to the table. He is the senior project developer from Amoresco. And while he's getting settled and getting used to being on TV here in Plymouth, we talk about town meeting. This project goes back to the last town meeting where we were authorized to go forward with our very creative and involved project of, which has four phases. Tonight really is the representation of the first phase for this project, which is the rooftop installation of rooftop solar for South High School. As you are aware, we have four phases to this project. This actually is the most time crucial project. We have been negotiating this project. As I had said, Amoresco, and it's all in the summary and I certainly don't want to take the time tonight. It's all here. But we went through an extensive RFP process. It has been vetted and approved by a number of legal counsel. It has been vetted and approved by Department of Energy Resources, which it has to be. It will have to be approved once the school committee votes and the Board of Selectmen vote. Hopefully, at the next meeting too, will authorize the school committee to lease part of the school building, which is what we had to do at North High School. It has to be installed and completed and commercially operating, commercially operating by June 30th to be under this program. So, we're under some very aggressive time constraints. These things don't happen quickly. And these things are, these contracts are not drafted in a matter of weeks. This has taken a number of time. And as I said, it has to be viewed by a number of boards. And I think the important thing here is that we, things will start to happen quicker now. We anticipate that we will be working on the battery. We are working on the battery coinciding with the battery. And we're working on the lights at the same time. We're also working on the parking canopies, which are in Eversource. Eversource is a queue right now because there's an interconnection review that they have to view. Our goal is to have the battery, the rooftop, and the lights up by the summer. And the rooftop is the first part of this. Having said that, I think it's really important, we talk about dollars tonight, and you know I love to talk about dollars, that we have, this one phase of the project will save almost $400,000 over the life of the project for the town of Plymouth. We project about $392,000 in savings. In addition to that, it will generate 20% of the electricity of New South High School. When we install the battery, that'll even do more. So, I asked Mr. Blenicki to come and to maybe just give us a little bit of an overview of the project for the school committee and to answer any technical questions that I may not be able to answer. So, Ed?
Good evening. My name is Ed Blenicki. I'm a project developer with Amoresco. Amoresco is an energy services provider. We do a number of different projects that are energy related. For example, in this case, solar. We also do performance contracting, combined heat and power plants. We also advise customers on how to buy and sell a commodity. We are a publicly traded company that's listed on the New York Stock Exchange. We have approximately 1,100 employees, the vast majority of which work here in Massachusetts. Our corporate headquarters is in Framingham, just an hour or so up the road. Or at least that's what it took me today to get down here. As Gary mentioned, we've, this has been, you know, a long process. I also would like to acknowledge that Plymouth is certainly a leader in this area by far. I understand with the addition of this capacity that the town, combined with the school district, will approach 10 megawatts of behind-the-meter renewable generation. That is tremendous. So, this board, the town, is certainly to be applauded because the carbon offset from that alone is just, you know, it's tremendous. 10 megawatts is basically a small power plant. And to realize that the town of Plymouth, the school district, has that behind the meter is certainly significant and I need to applaud that. As Gary mentioned, we're very close. And with the successful vote tonight, Amoresco is prepared to begin construction. Our structural engineer visited the site, I believe, last week with Mr. Montrow. And that looks good, you know, to put the, it's a new high school, so we don't expect any issues with the roof there. So, I'm here this evening to take any questions you might have regarding the PPA or the technical aspects of the project.
Well, just to clarify, you've used the term twice for people who are following this meeting on television, "behind the meter." Why don't you explain that phrase?
Sure. So, generally, generation assets, whether they be renewable energy, whether they be combined heat and power, are placed actually behind the utility's meter. So, there's a physical demarcation. The utility actually delivers power right up to your meter. Behind the meter is essentially what goes on in the building itself. And what's really important about behind the meter is that, you know, it doesn't really interfere with anything on the other side of Eversource's, in this case, Eversource's utility. And it's a great way to do projects and it offers the most savings. It's the least complex of the integration of the system into the building. But it's, behind the meter is a term that's commonly used to, you know, acknowledge putting energy assets physically behind the meter or within the, you know, the building itself.
Ms. Badja?
My question is, I know that we've worked, I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Costin or for you. I know that in the past, we've worked and we've gotten all the pieces together and then Eversource has held us up or some other entity. Do, is, now, if we get to where we need to be by June 30th and they, Eversource is not where they need to be, are we still part of the program? Or, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, no one's going to stand in our way.
I mean, at this point, we've made pre-applications to Eversource. We've been given a preliminary okay. We're waiting for the final okay. We don't anticipate there is anything on the rooftop itself. The subsequent projects, the battery and the carports that Mr. Costin mentioned, Eversource is going to need to take a closer look at. But at this time, I don't see Eversource being a holdup for the June 30th completion.
This is the only part of the project, if I may, that is SREC 2.
Correct.
Which ends June 30th. And I somewhat misspoke the terminology I used. It's got to be able to be commercially operating.
Actually, it's mechanical completion by June 30th.
Right.
After which, Eversource would visit the site. And typically, that takes about 30 days. And then we expect within about four weeks after substantial mechanical completion that the system would begin to produce electricity behind the meter.
So, really, it's up to Amoresco and us to get that done.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members?
If I may just make one more comment. This is part one. We, for the school committee to be able to finally sign this contract and submit it to the Department of Ed, we will need to have this Board of Selectmen allowing us to do this lease. So, it's just very important that this is part one of this signing, we, executing of this contract. We have to get the Board of Selectmen to, their support for this, for this project too.
Okay. Could you clarify the two, the two contracts that were in our package that we're going to have? We have to vote on both of them tonight?
There's only, there's one contract, which is the, I want to say the PPA, but it's the energy services contract. The other one is an assignment that really can come after.
We're not voting on the assignment tonight?
No, that's not really.
I think that's fine.
No, because essentially what happens is the company, there's a financing, they'll send up an LLC structure after, after this is funded.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just curious because it's a pretty large project. You're looking at May into June, about a month installation. Is there any unforeseeable things that could hang it up? And, I mean, what's the typical installation for a larger campus like we have?
So, the good news is the, most of the snow hopefully is gone. So, the roof is accessible. And provided the weather holds out, you know, we've done some legwork to secure the solar panels that we need to do this project. We expect with a successful outcome this evening and next week with the Selectmen that we should be able to begin the construction within about 30 or 35 days. So, we don't see, I don't see an issue with substantial mechanical completion by the end of June.
Any other questions? Okay, this is an action item and we've been giving the language for the... Okay, this is an action item and we've been giving the language for the, Mr. Bagley.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this contract as prepared by administration.
You've heard the recommendation to approve the contract as prepared by the administration.
Ms. Burgess is the second on that. Are there any questions? Uh, my question is that the language that was presented here in our agenda is, uh, about nine lines. Uh, can we assume that Mr. Bagley's motion incorporates those nine lines?
Right, because I said, the motion includes "as presented by administration."
Great, thank you very much. Just making sure. Works. Any, any, any other questions? Okay, it's time to vote on this motion. Everybody has a vote in, in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Costin and Mr. Dr. Mastis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have our mid-cycle update from Nathaniel Morton School. Dr. Mastis?
Yes, tonight, we have, uh, members of the School Improvement Council, School Council at Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, along with Principal Spencer, to present the school improvement plan from Nathaniel Morton Elementary School. I'd like to invite them up to the table, please. I think we need another chair. Yeah, we'll get it. You can take, you can take this one right here, Mike, for you. There you go, you got this. We can, you can take this one.
Thanks for having us. Uh, I would like to start by saying we have some of the members of our school council. There were a few people, um, who were unable to be here tonight, a couple who were in attendance earlier and then other commitments, come, I was referencing, it's kind of like sometimes being in the airport and you get those updates and delays are going on with some flights, so. Um, but I really, I do appreciate our school council. I would reference that our parent or family side of our school council this year is all new. Um, and to that degree, we've had some really informative discussions to sort of get us to this point of the year. Um, and, you know, we shared from the beginning that this is a year where we are working towards a plan and trying to fulfill goals and action items and those, uh, types of things. The other, the other thank you I'd certainly want to extend is to our faculty because without them, we're not making the improvements and the progress that we outlined in the report documents that we kind of shared with you before. Um, and certainly to our families for the support, um, that they give us on the various activities and such. Um, I would say that, uh, you know, we outlined some of the steps, uh, in the plan, which was, you know, just established at the end of last year. Um, and so that was in the written form. And our, our focus on this plan last year was really thinking about its impact on students. And we sort of titled that, like, "Through Their Eyes" was our presentation last year. So, we want to sort of instead look at hearing their voices. So, to kind of kick us off, we typically have had some video presentations in the past at this mid-cycle update. Um, and we've spared you mostly from our performances, um, and instead have turned to the students, uh, to sort of start us off with a, with a video that, um, I think would speak for itself, so if people who make the magic happen can do that for us.
Welcome to the Nathaniel Morton School Improvement Up, Plan Update. Today, we will be talking with students from our school to hear their thoughts and ideas about what's going on at NMS. Why don't you say your names?
Hello, I'm Alex Laney and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Ella Dunlop and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Eliza Morgan and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Abigail Gabriel and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Lincoln Smith and I'm in fourth grade.
What makes learning easier for you and your classmates?
I think something that makes it learning easier is the flexible seating because we have a lot of options, like the futon, the comfy chairs and the regular ones. And it gives us the choice on where we want to sit, like, if we want to sit alone, we can do that, and if we want to sit with our friends, we can also do that.
I think flexible seating is awesome because we can get our energy out and bounce around while we're listening to the teacher and focusing.
How about you, Ella? Any thoughts?
I think Chromebooks are a great way to help. Um, you can share your paperwork with your teachers, even if they aren't in the classroom or if they are in the classroom. You can also never lose your paperwork and you can never, and you can always talk with your teacher, even if they're not in the classroom.
I like Chromebooks too because, just like me, I've har, I do, I don't have good handwriting at all. And I think Chromebooks are a really good way to get it done more efficient and be able to edit it better.
I know that some classrooms have more than one teacher. To help us talk about this, we welcome Wade and Juliette.
Hi, my name's Juliette Nielsen and I'm in third grade. And the idea I have about having another teacher in the classroom is the helper teacher in my classroom in math, she gives us more strategies, as, on the other hand, my regular teacher just, um, gives the plan and then she sends us off.
Hi, I'm Wade and I'm in fifth grade. And I agree with Juliette, I think having an extra teacher in the classroom definitely is helpful when, because if you're in math and you're struggling, the t, it's not like you have one teacher and that teacher's meeting with someone else. You have another teacher that can come and help. And if you need someone to check your papers, we have, you, it's not like there's one teacher, you have another teacher to help and that's definitely really helpful.
Abby, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, um, I think it's helpful that, um, there's multiple teachers in the room because some teachers have different teaching styles and strategies and it, they, it can help you if you're kind of struggling.
Great. I know that we've been trying to create a close school community by having morning meetings and giving kids a chance to help around the school. Does anyone have any thoughts about that?
I like morning meeting because, um, at share, we have a chance to express ourselves. And some classes play games at morning meetings, so it gives us, um, something to look forward to.
I have an idea about morning meeting. I recently had two new students in my class, so we got to share our names. And we, um, rolled dice and multiplied to get our brains ready.
Lincoln, what do you think about helping in school?
I think the school had a good idea, help students older than second grade help out in family math night.
Wade, I know we had a special day recently, would you like to talk about it?
Yeah, I have a kid in my class would dance and we celebrated, like, a day and we'd wear, we would wear crazy socks and bring in a dollar and we, it was fun. We learned a lot about Down Syndrome and the different types and it was just really fun doing something for a good cause.
Abby, do you have anything to say about that?
I liked how everyone took part in it and we raised a lot of money, $350 to help out.
Wade, I know you have a specific job in school, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, I do Chromebooks. I, um, and I definitely learn more about different kids when I just deliver them. Sometimes they'll talk to me and it's just fun to go around.
Are there ways to help our big school feel not so big?
I think big friends and little friends are a great way to meet some new friends. With the younger grade that you're paired wi, paired with, it makes you have friends that aren't just in your own grade.
I remember last year, my big buddy taught me how to be a big friend because I was going to be it this year. And now, I just kind of think I became great friends with my little buddy.
There's also something that involves, um, younger kids and fifth graders. It's called Ukulele Club and the, it goes through all grades and the kindergarteners are able to come too. And the fifth graders are able to help the kindergarteners with whatever they need.
I agree with that. I think there should be a little bit more clubs though. I think there's five clubs right now, which is counting robotics, ukulele club, um, EdTV chorus and band and orchestra. I think they're really good, but there could be some more that go through across the grades, um, like every grade together, like something very easy, like a chess club or a card game club or even a reading club.
Those sound like fun, important ideas. I also remember that we kicked off the year with a community service celebration and that each grade level would be having their own community service project happening in these last months of school. For example, second grade, second graders just learned about how to help the tree animals, like the tamarind, after reading the Lorax, and they raised over $350 to support the cause.
My brother was in that class and he can't stop talking about it.
Same with my sister.
We will be back after a short break and look at some exciting opportunities that we, we will learn more about.
Hey, I think I noticed a, a leak in the tank. How are we going to stop it?
What about a seal?
Ah! That one right here!
No, not that kind of seal, but only if there is something else that could stop leaks fast.
Hmm, look at that thing.
No more worries, there is. That's right. With new NMS seal, you can stop any leak. Just grip, rip, and then stick. Problem solved. It's perfect for fish tanks or coastal schools during nor'easters. Not that those are ever an issue. It's a handy resource and just like the students and teachers at NMS, it will turn any problem into a solution.
It's got my seal of approval. And it's a whale of a product.
That was interesting.
Not as interesting as some of the projects we will be able to be a part of. Would anyone like to talk about some?
One of them is STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. It's a great way to partner up and start working on teamwork.
Uh, yeah, and we get to, like, go with other classes. It's really cool, the activities that we do. We, we build traps and it's really cool.
I have something else to add. It's not about STEM, but it's actually about AR and VR. They're really good ways to learn with, like, for AR, um, you can look at the new solar system, that's what we did. And for VR, you could look at, um, every, like, different places with 3D pic, well, 360 pictures.
And we're still learning about marine life. Any thoughts there?
The whole third grade classrooms are all working on researching marine animals. My group was whales and it was really fun to work as a team.
In Mr. Clary's class, um, we got, we did brook trout and a lot of kids have been doing that and feeding them. It's just really cool to learn about the brook trout.
Another thing is the school science fair that the fifth graders are doing. There's a lot of different, and it has to be marine themed, so I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, I think the science fair is a great way to learn.
In addition to those, I know that Ms. Hughes, our computer lab teacher, has got some cool engineering devices for all our grades, like, things like B-bots, KIBO, WIDU, Dash and Dot, and little bits, and Blockzles. When kids get to use them, it will help with their, with their problem solving and build our teamwork. We also get to show how to code and use technology to solve real problems. It makes me excited for our younger students and what they have to look forward to. Thanks, thank you to all of the kids here today and for all our students. We want to give them a big thank you to all our teachers and families that work to make our school a place where we learn to love and love to learn.
They were amazing. Amazing. Play that at town.
You get the whale joke.
We're, we're always swimming, that's for sure. Um, I just wanted to let it roll out there because we had some kids who were behind the scenes and that was their chance to, to get some credit. So I want to obviously thank those students. Um, they represent our school. We had a chance to, and have been, kind of throughout the year, to have these small, um, kind of student forums to get some feedback and I, it's really a direct, um, I think, uh, extension of the kind of leadership that Dr. Mastis has talked to us about a lot, about making connections and hearing kids and where they're at. And I know that he's been able to run some of those forums himself. And so, through that, we were able to sort of find some of the students who felt a little more comfortable in talking about some of our goal areas. And really from that, um, brought them to the EdTV studios and I can't thank, um, that staff enough. I do think, um, it'd be a great thing to sort of showcase because it also highlights, um, the, the opportunities and experiences that students have here, uh, in Plymouth. And so coming to those studio, uh, to those studios and, uh, the staff there, from our EdTV director, Jen Mulvaney, her assistant Abby Soars, the two of them, but then Evan McNamara, who does a lot, he's here tonight. Just putting that together and, and just making those kids feel, um, just really, uh, fabulous in terms of what they did that day. Many of them went home and just said it was the best experience they'd had in a long time, so, um, they certainly did us proud in, in trying to explain, um, our school improvement update and kind of where we are and take us off the paper. Um, but in addition to that, we just kind of wanted to walk through a little bit, um, of the goal areas, um, briefly with some of the slides to try to give some clarity to some of the students, um, pieces that are there. Again, the school council members that are here, uh, we don't have a prepared text necessarily for that. Uh, they may chime in here and there, and anybody who's at the table wants to, we can certainly hand mics down. Mrs. Chase and myself certainly will be talking about some of the goal areas and, um, I would be remiss, I think I try to do this each time we come, but, um, I'm not sure, I probably would still be swimming out there in the ocean, uh, without Mrs. Chase, um, by my side in lots of different ways. I think, um, the collaboration that we have together is a good model for our faculty and also our students to see. So I am in, in, uh, really in debt to, to her talent and her expertise. So, we just want to walk through a couple of the slides that can highlight some of the goal areas, um, and hopefully get close to where the students were. But if we have a quick question on the video?
Yes, uh, what I'd like, instead of saying these people that are here...
Absolutely.
If you could introduce them, or have them introduce themselves?
Sure. I will. And I'll mention the people who aren't here as well, so.
Okay.
I guess the, the mic will just pass it on down.
Good evening, I'm, is that on?
Yeah.
Yes? Hi, I'm Jennifer Tarantino. I have a son who is in first grade and another one who'll be entering kindergarten in the fall, so I'm very proud to be a part of this committee and I've been incredibly impressed by the leadership of the school as well as faculty and staff. And I really hope that town meeting supports our school system this weekend.
I'm Jean Reardon, I'm a first grade teacher at Nathaniel Morton.
I'm Chrissy Chase, Assistant Principal.
Hi, I'm Dr. Beth Savage, I'm a psychologist in town and I also have two seven-year-old boys in first grade at Nathaniel Morton.
Hi, I'm Jessie Hanlon. I am, uh, the mom of a, uh, an eighth grader here at PCIS and a fifth grader at Nathaniel Morton. And we're sad to see our time at Nathaniel Morton wrapping up. It's just been a wonderful experience all throughout the years.
Mrs. Burgess, thank you for that prompt. I would also mention, so Mindy Anderson is another parent for us who's unable to be here tonight. Maureen Burns, um, faculty member, Jen Hessel Smith, uh, parent Kristen Morrison, and another faculty member Lynn Walker, um, not available to be here tonight, so. Within introductions kind of taken care of and the students doing most of the legwork for us, we'll just kind of move into some, hopefully clarity on some of the points, um, with the slides that are up there. So we can move on to slide two. Do I have a clicker to do that? Oh, no. We're good. Someone helped us, someone's helped us out already. Um, so goal one, the students sort of talked a little bit about this right off the bat. Um, and it is about trying to meet the needs of all students to get them to, um, meeting grade level standards and thinking about the different ways we can remove barriers. That phrasing "all means all" is really important to us. And so they talked a little bit about some of the tools that they notice and some of the structures that are in there. So for us, it's that idea of inclusion models, uh, which come through some of the co-teaching rooms that we put together and practice and, and, and work on that for the last few years and we continue to do that. Um, they mentioned flexible seating and some of the technology, both low tech and high tech, that help them access that. A lot of that happens with our commitment to the Google platform and Chromebooks and Readwrite Google that happens, but also there's, there's other devices and applications that, again, I think kids aren't always aware of, but are there for them to, you know, either access text to speech or to have books kind of read for them and so that they can take part in really, uh, rich conversations, even if they're having a struggle with decoding for themselves at a, at an upper grade still. Grade levels this year, uh, one of the things that we wanted to kind of push forward on this goal area is to really be collaborating across the grade level and thinking about intervention practice. So they're meeting bi-weekly, um, talking about some of the tools we have, also talking about some of the challenges that students are facing and trying to solve that together. So that's, I think, been in a, in a positive, um, kind of movement. And just a few pieces that we do have on sort of data points that we're looking at. Uh, we continue to sort of think about our own district-based assessments, so looking at those benchmarks and that really looks at literacy, um, using Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. This is the first year for us, across the grades, that we would have that. So typically, we had, um, kindergarten, first and second grade that used that system, um, and third grade, and then fourth and fifth graders were using a different literacy assessment tool. Now we have K through five using that, so it's really going to be, I think, a helpful data point for us. Currently, in what we have is the winter benchmarking. We have it three times a year. We have close to, close to 80% of students being where we would want them to be, meeting those mid-year expectations, um, kind of across the school. There's definitely some grade levels that we want to sort of continue to, sort of work with and think about how to continue to make them, um, you know, gain some, some, some data points there. The other data piece that I'm kind of excited about and got help, again, I think is really indicative of, of this system, is, um, help from our data management team, Karen Vanette specifically, but using some of the work we, um, and information we have... but using some of the work we, and information we have in Aspen, able to pull out the end-of-year report card structure, and to really see what kids are getting in terms of meeting expectations for the standards at the end of the year. And so we just looked quickly at the two areas of ELA and math, and about 76% of our students were having it, so this was last year, end-of-year June of 2017, meeting or exceeding the expectation of the standard based on our reporting. So I think it's something for us to continue to use about how are the day-to-day reportings comparing to some of the other, you know, one-time hits that we do get, whether that's a district-based or a state-based assessment. So it is something that I'm definitely kind of encouraged and want to keep looking at. So, I'm going to have us move over, see if I can do this well. If not, someone's going to help me. There we go. And turn it over to Mrs. Chase to talk a little bit about goal two.
So our second goal is talking about service to school, where we give students the responsibility to kind of serve our school in different ways. So as you saw in the video, the kids talked a lot about this one, with this, with the kickoff to the school-wide assembly with the Golden Boot, which was a district-wide service project, so that kind of helped kick off our school year. Our staff has brainstormed together different activities for service projects, and our goal is really for all students in third through fifth grade to participate in a service project, and we are well on our way. So throughout the year, we've just had students participate, older students participate as being helpers at events like Math Night, which was just last week, the Ukulele All-Stars. We have about 100 kids who come Friday mornings with their ukuleles and play in the gym, and then we have a team of about 20 Ukulele All-Stars that walk around and help, as Mrs. Von Seka says, like hand over hand, helping them learn the, how to play the ukuleles, and that's just really great to see. We had a great event in January where our students performed, our fifth graders performed the Jungle Book, and we really saw how students rose to the occasion on that by giving them different roles, responsibilities. Every single member of our fifth grade was part of that play, from stage crew to, you know, decorations, to performing, dancing, singing, and they really all rose to that occasion. So just, we've really seen the impact of, if students have a job, if they are feeling important, they are present, they are ready to learn, and they're excited to be a part of our school. So we've also partnered recently this year with the Center for Active Living, and some seniors have been coming to visit our school in the last couple of weeks. They've done some reading with the kids, they've done some writing conferencing with the kids, they get energized by it, and the students really, really love it. We have eight volunteers that are coming on a weekly basis. But before we got to that point, we had some visits of our students over to the Center for Active Living. So students went on a bus and played bingo with the seniors, they went for holiday gift exchange, and then we actually had some of our fifth graders who were in the Jungle Book go over and perform some, some numbers of the Jungle Book over at the senior center. So it's a great kind of partnership that we're building for the students to see that kind of intergenerational connections. Also spoken up in the video is something that's recently starting, but all grade levels are going to be part of it, is the second grade did the Tamarind project after reading the Lorax. So it's a, each grade level is having a common book read throughout a month, and then each book has an associated service project with it. So our second graders read the Lorax to celebrate Dr. Seuss Day, and then they raised money for adopting a Tamarind, and they are then going in, later in the spring, to the New Bedford Zoo to visit the Tamarind exhibit there. So all grades are participating in that, so we're well on our way to meeting this goal.
I would just echo one piece on the connections we made at the senior center, or the center, I love the Center for Active Living, I think it's a, a great way to think about it. Just be careful when you go to help a bingo. That is an event that we learned you want to be really loud and clear with, and students had a great time. It was just, it was great to see those relationships slowly build. That was our first visit, and then continuing, and as I said, Mrs. Chase mentioned, we have close to eight to 10 volunteers, were, it was kind of a dual initiative, so Cold Spring as well has been coming, and so I know that they have about the same number. We, Principal Morgan and myself went to an event there, and close to 20 people who wanted to volunteer and be in schools were there, and we've just been trying to work out those schedules, and I know you'll hear from her in a couple of weeks at her school update, so just to let you know that that's going out between our two schools. I also wanted to pass the microphone perhaps over to Dr. Sivajan, just to, one of our goals through the school council piece, and it's on this goal area, is to continue to have sort of family forums. One of the things that got us to be thinking about service to school was our opportunity to have Dr. Robert Brooks with us last year and present about this idea of really connecting students to authentic experiences. And so for this year, this Wednesday actually, for all those people who are out watching, I heard it's quite the audience out in the TV world, this Wednesday night, we have another really, I think renowned speaker, Maria Trazi, is a local person who works a lot with connecting students and families. Typically, it's been around loss, but loss means lots of things, isn't just dealing in a grieving situation, but she's coming on a topic about five to thrive, and I know there was something in our discussions across the panel about trying to pick a topic, and where we could kind of help and support families, that we sort of explored that and came across Maria. So it's open to all of Plymouth residents, and actually beyond Plymouth, but this Wednesday night at our school, 6:30 to 8:00. So, and I know Dr. Sivajan had some thoughts about that, perhaps.
I think you left out that there's babysitting.
That's why I handed you the mic.
So I'm really excited that the, the school council is bringing Maria Trazi to come and speak about important things like resilience, managing feelings, kindness, empathy building, and one of the pieces I'm most excited about is that she's going to offer parents in the community some, some real tools to be able to use with their kids, especially at a time when there are so many difficult things happening. I know that we had Miles, I believe the student at peer, talking about the rally that he did, and for us, parents of elementary school kids, how to talk with our kids about what's happening. So I think Maria Trazi is going to really provide a service to the community by talking with parents about how to talk to their kids. And there's free babysitting.
There is. Childcare, we like to say, because we, has to be age-appropriate, school-aged, we want to go with that. So I didn't know, Mrs. Reardon, if you wanted to quickly touch upon what first grade might be doing?
The first graders have chosen the book to, On Our Way to Market Street, and I believe what we're going to be doing is running a can drive during the month of May. And my classroom also has been fortunate enough to have a volunteer come in and read with my students. They've had the visitor twice already, and it is just something that has been so successful. The kids love it. Our visitor, Mrs. Souza, she just has been so impressed at my students' reading levels and abilities, and so, and it's just been wonderful. The kids light up when she walks in the room, so it's been very fortunate to have her in there helping us.
Great. Thank you both for adding a little bit to that. We'll just move on to goal three, and I know there's more expertise coming later with a technology update, so I may leave some of that, but I would want, and I know the kids mentioned her, but Mrs. Hughes, Carmella Hughes, who's our Technology Integration Specialist, has been a driving force to this goal. This is a goal area that we have kept in our plan for a couple of years. We certainly had it there as we moved to this marine-themed piece to think about hands-on experiences and learning for kids, and it's extended a little bit. We kept that focus certainly for our school, but moved into this engineering and technology aspect, and so she has really been, I think, diligent in finding grant opportunities to bring different devices into the school, and I think piloting it also for, for district use. So, you know, this year is definitely a continuation of faculty training and working with her closely to see how to integrate it outside of the computer lab space. And at our family math night, which was last week, she was able to set up a display area for one of the, or a couple of the different devices she has, so that is moving on, and I think the technology piece certainly helps engage our students, and I think you saw them kind of light up in that piece for sure. And it's beyond the tool, I think one of the students spoke to the fact that the teamwork and the collaboration that comes through that problem-solving opportunity. And as I said before, we are still thinking about marine connections this year through the help of our PTA representative, Kate Angley, who's been helping make connections for us. We're continuing our trout raising, we have a good number in the tank, so that's, that's always, we're not sure when they go from egg into the hatchlings, how we'll go, but we're looking at other aquaculture pieces, where she's made some connections with some local oyster farming, to have them come in and talk to kids, and a boat builder, and also a connection with the Plymouth Yacht Club, which is right behind us, obviously, so having people come in and talk a bit about that. And then finally, goal four. I think you heard one of the students, and it might have been Eliza, who did a great job at moderating our discussion, how do we make our big school not so big? And there's lots of areas, I think, that this hits upon, and I think the kids talked about it so much more than, than I could. But two things I want to just reference. One, in terms of a data point, you know, this could go to any of our goals, but we want kids to be in school. I mean, that's our overall sort of end goal for kids, we want them there. So we definitely have seen an uptick in the attendance, I mean, we're still having some issues that we have with a small group of kids who struggle sometimes with what we would call chronic absenteeism. They, they reach a threshold that's a greater than 10% absences, but on the flip side of that, we've seen a real increase over those kids who are in school on a higher than 95% attendance rate. So kids wanting to be in school, being in school, and I think part of that, again, is what's offered in front of them throughout the day, and so that's an important piece. But the other one, I think, is, is a lot larger and more impactful, and a couple of the students spoke about the day that we had back in March, March 21st is World Down Syndrome Day, and again, another opportunity where kids, and we heard from families, and how far-reaching that experience was for students to hear from their peer, but also their peer's family to explain some pieces of what that looks like. And what I heard back from one family member is just how impacted their student was, but also that they know that, that their peer is just one of the friendliest kids in the whole building, and they were just excited to celebrate with that student that day. But it carried over. We had a student who came in today and asked if she could make a special announcement for today, because today is World Autism Day, and she has a sibling with autism, and she wanted to let everybody kind of know about that. So this idea that, you know, we're reaching out to keep informing each other about how we support one another, regardless of what our challenges or our strengths are. I think I left it back up in the seats, but we've, a way to sort of do that for us is we've taken the, the book Wonder, there's a follow-up book with it, which is sort of a quote book, it's the precepts from Mr. Brown that he uses in the classroom, and so we have a quote of the week that we continue to use in our announcements each day, and so that the end of that, that book itself, or that story, if you're not aware of it, and certainly in the movie, you know, there's a, there's a part that sort of says, "Everybody deserves a standing ovation once in their life." And I think we've seen that happen a lot recently this year with some of this extension to having kids take ownership of what happens in their building, and ownership for each other's successes for their day, and that's, I think, really what we want responsive community to be all about. So, I didn't know if anybody else at the table wants anything to say, I know that no one was eager to get into the commercial, so I probably don't want to, but...
I was just going to add one quick thing. As you were speaking, I remembered, early on in the school year, a first grader saw me in the hallway, and he just invited me into his class for morning meeting. And that's just how it's been, we've had our morning meetings, and it's not just the classroom teachers and the students, it's, we've invited lots of, all of our special area teachers coming in, our lunch and recess teachers, coming in early to attend morning meetings to really build that sense of community beyond just the classroom, and so we've had some great successes with that.
So hopefully, we gave you a little capsule of where we've gone on, on the plan, and the report that we handed you before. We're happy to answer questions on any of it, from the video to this presentation, to this sort of update that we submitted to you through this, through this night, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that, for that report. Committee members. No hands.
Great job.
I guess, I guess you've answered all of our questions before we asked them.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Good job, everybody, thank you. Thank you.
The committee will take its break after the next presentation. Can we manage?
You got spirits.
I'm getting a little love. I don't know. I may have to have a revolt.
All right, I think I've been told that we're going to take a little break right now. We'll be back in about six minutes.
Enjoy your presentation without having to worry about it.
You stand in recess, thank you. We're back in session, thank you very much. We have a presentation now from the Educational Technology and Instructional Media, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, tonight, we are honored to have a number of staff members from our technology department here to kind of walk through the update for technology, and I'll turn it over to Julia Colby and Alan McLean. So Julia, I think you're going to start off?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, great. First, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to do some introductions. Okay, thank you. So we'll introduce, Amy, you want to start?
I'm Amy Canneller, I'm at Plymouth South Middle School.
I'm Carrie Cameron, I'm the Tech Integration Specialist at PCIS here.
I'm Justin Schuler, I'm from South High School Tech Integration Specialist.
Jeff Hudson, North High School Tech Integration Specialist.
So they probably look familiar, because all four of them were here last year, so they're also members of the Technology Committee, and great, great team members. I think both Alan and I agree, our, our technology department has been so busy this year, and I couldn't ask for a better department, and the techs and the tech integration specialists, they're all hard workers, and we've got a lot accomplished this year, so we're going to start showing you some. So what we'll do tonight is, we're going to talk about some of the highlights of our year, and then we'll go into year three of the technology plan. And we're going to start with virtual reality. So we were very fortunate and thankful to receive a grant from the Plymouth Education Foundation. It's really great following Nathaniel Morton, because that's where the grant started, and we put some funds to the grant that we received from the Plymouth Education Foundation, and we were able to get a set for elementary, and this set goes to all the elementary schools. Every school has had it so far, and then we were able to take resources from each of the secondary schools, and we got a set for secondary. So it goes around, I think you have it each three weeks, and it's just been great. The kids have loved it, like I think when Jeff had, he had 25 classes, Carrie did like 30 classes. It's, it's just a really great resource to have. Each expedition is a 360-degree experience, it lets the students explore some incredible locations while being guided by the teacher. I have the teacher device here, and what it, it shows you all the explanations of what the students are seeing, it also asks questions, so it's very easy for the teacher to just take them through this expedition. So it gives the students an opportunity to explore things that they would never get a chance to go to. So we're gonna, I'll turn this on, and this controls the glasses, and for those of you at home, this is Google Expeditions App. So this is available on an Android device or an iOS device. So I am in honor of the opening day of baseball, they don't have Fenway Park on here, so, but they are, we have City Field. So I'm going to start it, and I believe when you look into your glasses, you should see the field. So one of the, does everybody see in the field?
Yes.
Great.
Just no players, it's empty.
We'll do some stuff. So there's some questions here, you know, what is it called when a home team scores the winning run in its last at-bat? Anyone know?
Walk-off.
A walk-off. Okay, so now I'm going to take you somewhere else, it's the Coca-Cola Corner, and look high beyond the right field wall, and you can see the Coca-Cola Corner with its bright red sign. This is an interactive area where fans can socialize and families can have fun. It also seats 550 fans. I'm going to pause it now, because I'm going to go to another part of the app, I'm going to start playing it, and now we're going to be, oops, that's the wrong one. This is called the Home Run Apple, this is a lot of fun. The Home Run- The Home Run Apple is within the all-black batter's eye area, which is why it has to be invisible except for after Mets homers. The dark background allows hitters to see the ball coming out of the pitcher's hand, required in every MLB park. What's your favorite M&M? They're all here in a 102-seat section right above the outfield wall. This is my favorite. It's the Big Apple. Did you see a video? So the Mets will hit about 200 homers a year, and this is what happens to the Home Run Apple when they knock one out. I'm going to pause.
Why are you turned around? What's behind you?
Now you should be standing on, this is all about second base. There's where the retired numbers are, high atop City Field. Anyone who plays a position of second base does not actually stand on the base itself. And then we'll go to lights, camera, action. City Field is one of the most energy-efficient ballparks in baseball. Notice that LED field lighting high overhead allows you to see everything during night games. They are the only light banks in Major League Baseball that have a wavy design, and that pays tribute to the many bridges around New York City. I'm going to pause again. And now you should be in the dugout.
Oh, wow.
That's cool. That's awesome.
Dugout delights. This is going to be another video. Ooh, that'll make you hungry. And that's where, need a picture to start warming up at the bullpen? All the manager or pitching coach has to do is pick up one of these four phones on the wall. And that's it. I mean, it's not it. There's a lot more, but for tonight, we thought we'd give you a taste of what the kids are actually seeing. And, you know, they're going to places like the Great Wall of China, the International Space Station, coral reefs, the pyramids, surface of Mars. There's so many. There's over 700 Google Expeditions. And there's other things, I think, did you use things other than Google Expeditions?
I think one of the cool things about the Virtual Reality is it gives you an opportunity, gives students an opportunity to, or teachers an opportunity, to present something that brings out an emotional response from students that the normal daily education doesn't necessarily do all the time. We noticed when you went to the dugout, there were oohs and ahs, and those are the experiences that resonate with the kids. They're the lasting learning experiences. And there's some really good stuff out there with New York Times Virtual Reality, where they actually do onsite work where they're, well, they'll follow somebody around. It's, they'll follow somebody around like in Syria, and a student will show, or a child will show where the, where they had to escape when the bombings happened, and where they had, you know, how they escaped, and what their home is like now, and what the refugee camps are like now. And those opportunities are not something that a student would normally get, but they are opportunities that provide that emotional response, that create empathy, and really tie long-term learning. So the opportunity to have these and where it's going to go in the future seems to be really promising with, and there's the augmented reality as well.
Right, which Nathaniel Morton brought up, and it was amazing. We went there, a Google representative came for the augmented reality, and it was about an hour before school actually started, and almost all the teachers were there for this demonstration, and it was pretty exciting. So we're actually looking into maybe getting some additional iPads because the augmented reality can run on the iPads. And then by getting the iPads for the augmented reality, they can also be used for all the other creative, you know, things that can be done on iPads. So we're looking at that. And like Jeff said, you hear the oohs and ahs. I'm not going to take the time to show you the video, but in your packet, you'll see in the lower right-hand corner, you can go to that Twitter video. But it's fun because every time you go to see the kids watch the Virtual Reality, the teacher will be talking, and then when it comes on the screen, they're all, the kids are all like, "Oh," you know, all so excited. The next thing we're going to talk about, and Nathaniel Morton had mentioned this, what we did this year was we tried to get Dash, the robot, out to all the elementary schools. So all the elementary schools have four Dash robots. I wanted to try to get consistency among the elementary schools. It did originate, again, with another grant, a MasQ grant from Nathaniel Morton. She was able to purchase a lot of the STEAM equipment, and Dash was one of them. And we really liked what Dash could do. So we got four for each school, and the tech integration specialists are using Dash, maybe in after-school programs, or during their coaching time, or during some extra time during their regular classes. But they're responsive robots, and it allows them to interact with students, their environment with each other. They have built-in motors, sensors, LEDs, and audio capabilities. They can respond to voice, they can dance, they can sing, and they can navigate objects. We have, we got basketball hoops with them.
Xylophone.
Xylophone. Tried to have somebody here, a student here, but it was past her bedtime. So she was going to bring Dash, but maybe next year. Or maybe we'll do a video like Nathaniel Morton did, but... So again, these are videos. This is where they use Dash to calculate the perimeter of a rectangle. This is where a few schools partnered with music, and the kid, like, they had Dash play the xylophone, and some of the kids were singing, or they actually programmed the song in for Dash to play. So it's really interesting what Dash can do. This one is a really good video. This was at Manomet, and some of the fifth-grade students were, became leaders and taught the younger kids how to use Dash. So next, we're going to talk about the elementary technology curriculum. Last year, we did our 19 units, and we did all of the lesson plans, K through 5, and put the essential questions. What we did this year, and this is in your packets, oh, I forgot to mention also in your packets, is a newsletter for how Virtual Reality is being used around the district, sorry, and a newsletter on Dash and Dot, also, how it's being used in elementary. So another item in your packet is this Unit of Study Overview. I really like this because it takes the elementary curriculum, puts it on a few pieces of paper, and it's a great resource for parents if they want to know what's going on. I got that idea when we had that, that Saturday, when we had the families come in, and Emily did her presentation on social media, and some of the parents asked about what was being taught in the computer curriculum. So this is, it's a great resource. We also did a curriculum map. We finished that, and that's taking all of the new standards, the Digital Literacy and Computer Science standards, and we mapped them to where they're being offered, what grade, what unit. It's a very comprehensive curriculum. The Tech Integration Specialists, I got to commend them at the elementary level. They really put a lot of effort into these lessons, and those kids get a really good education. By the time they come to the middle school, they're doing really well in technology. And then we took it a little further, and we put it all on a website. So the, it's available to anyone with a Plymouth Public Schools ID. So they go in, and we have each grade as a tab. You click on the grade, and you have all the units there. You click on the unit, and you'll get the lesson plan. We also put all of our STEAM resources up there. Our Virtual Reality resources are available up there, so it's one-stop shopping for the So the next thing we did, because we were focusing at the elementary level on our technology standards, we talked about it at the middle school level, and Carrie and Amy got together and developed a resource. We don't have, we don't have tech integration specialists that are teaching the students like they are at the elementary level, so we had to put something together that lists the standards, and then they came up with the resources that can be used by faculty or by parents on how to meet those standards. And not only how to meet the standards, but you can see on this one, the Computing and Society Ethics and Laws, how it's how to find out about internet safety, how about hackers, about copyright. So it's good things for students to learn, and it's ways that they can meet those resources because the DESE is pushing more for the computer science. And that's just some of them. And again, that packet is also in. So with the high school coming on board with the testing, we looked at what we had. We had an MCAS resource. It was on a website, but it was just one page, and we thought, you know what, we really got to organize this a lot better. So we have Carrie here, who is excellent at knowing everything that's going on with MCAS. So we created it, and Carrie makes some excellent handouts. She just held a training for the high school principals and assistant principals today on what to look for in MCAS, and, you know, what the teachers have to do when they're giving the test to the students. So, and so we have that resource now for not only elementary, middle school, but now for high school. So we have been working very hard since July on our new website. Monday is the Go Live date, so I'm very excited about that. It's, it looks great. I love it. So at the top, you can see, those are called channels. We partnered with Blackboard, and we partnered, and we brought a lot of our products together with Blackboard. And I can't say enough about their support. Every Tuesday, I have an online meeting with them. They have just been nothing but supportive with us and helpful. And we had the trainings, and then they were training the trainers, and I've given about, I think, 12 different trainings. Everybody that's editing the website should have had three different trainings. We did one training just on accessibility because that's a law now, so that was a big focus of this website. It's also responsive design, so no matter what device you go on, it will shrink to that. It's nice. You can even play with your screen to see how it will look when it shrinks to a phone size or an iPad size. We also have at the bottom, you can see, that, those are called global icons. Those are great because they appear on every page. And when I ran analytics for our last, for our existing website, the most-hit pages are your bus routes, your meals in the summer. It's the reading, summer reading list. So those are what the global icons are going to be. And in the summertime, we're thinking that we will take the bus routes off and replace that with things going on in the summer. And at the beginning of school, we can replace that back to the bus routes. So it'll adapt to the season that it is. So this is the district page. When you're on the district page, you'll see the district logo. This is obviously South High School. And what I really like about this website, and you can't really see the colors up there, but every school, its colors are done. And we complement it with the brochures that Emily did. So the colors of the school here are the colors that you'll see on the website. And so every school, their logo will be there, their colors will be there, their pictures will be there. And where you see where it says Plymouth South High, this is really nice. I could put text under there, and it could go to a link. So if there's something going on, you could put the picture up there, and then you could put the text underneath it, and it could link to more information. So I'm really looking forward to doing that. PC, and so this is PCIS. You can see the purple, you can see their logo.
I don't get that much.
Elementary school, Indian Brook. And then when you get into any school, up at the top, you'll see where it says About Our School. When you click on About Our School, that's where it gives a school overview. It's a great place for somebody who's looking at Plymouth Public Schools to come to and find out about it. We took the information from the brochures and populated some of these tabs with that So I must say thank you. I have a great team. I have Alan working behind the scenes, making sure that when they click www.plymouth.k12, it goes to the Blackboard site. And the four secondary tech integration specialists have been wonderful at working with the people at their building, the front office, guidance, athletics, just being the middle person and helping them out, and then helping get the sites, you know, populated with all the information. We still, there's still probably about 5% left to do, but I have a week left, so we're working on it. And Nancy has been part of that team also. I also have an intern who is a parent at Indian Brook. She has three children attending Plymouth Public Schools, Stacy Burton. She's been a big help to me on the website also. So she's going to Bridgewater for communication and education, so the website is great for her. And she's learning all about Plymouth Public Schools. And so now we'll go over the tech plan. The third, time flies. It's our third year, our final year of this tech plan, so it's gone really fast. We will be building a new technology plan next year. And as you remember, we have four goals. So Goal One, some of this we've already gone over, the technology website for staff, the MCAS. We did start exploring portfolios more this year. We are looking, we are, we have some teachers at the high school level and middle school level doing portfolios. We have some students doing portfolios at the elementary schools, Google Drive and Google Sites, and Wixie and Seesaw. And I think Amy has a lot of eighth graders that have built portfolios. So we're looking at all of the different options that are out there for portfolios. In the future, if we go to one-to-one, then we will have to come up with some kind of standard for portfolios. The gaming and coding, there's 10 classes going on at Plymouth North High School in gaming and coding. We are running our camps again this year, so there'll be three weeks of coding in the summer. Some of the elementary tech integration specialists are doing After-School Coding Club. I think Nathaniel Morton also mentioned that. The virtual learning, in its 16th year, all four secondary schools, in the summer, what was interesting is they had four students do a solar design class. Goal Two, the technology skills. So the elementary checklist, I'm not sure I mentioned this before, but this, the Unit of Study Overview, we also turned this into a checklist. So as the tech integration specialists go through these lessons, they're checking off which classes had them. So at the end of the year, we can see what was missed, what wasn't missed. And it's kind of like a checklist for, okay, now, these students, they should know all Google Domain Stats, this was interesting. I looked at the Google Domain Stats, and I picked March 19th, but then I went back about six months, and they're all very close. The active users in the students' Google domain, active users of Google Classroom are approximately 4,200 students. Google Drive averages about 4,800 students on a day, given day. The staff needs surveys. Dr. Campbell does that every year, and as a result of that, our department continues to provide PD focusing on the needs of the teachers. We also held a Google Palooza this summer. We partnered with MasQ. We held the Google Palooza at Plymouth North. That allowed us to send 10 teachers for free to the whole day of PD. The technology feedback form, one of the things, the concerns was old desktops, old laptops, and Alan will talk about that, but that was resolved. Also, it was interesting because when we did this two years ago, that feedback form focused on, we had a tech integration specialist that had to leave because her husband's job in another state was, he was moved. So it showed up. You know, there was a lot of complaints that they were missing the tech integration specialist. Then we filled that, and then last year, there wasn't a lot of coaching time at one of the other elementary schools, and it was noted in there. And we were able to get a part-time tech integration specialist at Hedge Elementary School. So I'm happy to say that now they all have consistent coaching time, which is really, really helpful. A lot of positive comments about the whole, the department... A lot of positive comments about the department, about being responsive, helpful, knowledgeable, important part of professional development, so. Goal three, we continue to model social media, thanks to Emily and giving us lessons. And you'll see, I just, it's amazing, the tweets that, just to learn what Plymouth Public Schools is all about, you go out there and you see so many tweets. It's real, I like it because I get to see what's going on in all the buildings. The TSTs, we're still continuing with our model where we send some TSTs to the MasQ conference for one day of professional development and they, in turn, provide professional development at our in-service days. The blended learning, Jeff and Justin have been big in that. They're working on phase two of the blended learning. Because of the South High School going, you know, going live this year and Justin having a big role in that, we tabled the phase two of blended learning. Probably next year, we'll be doing the phase two of that. And goal four.
Good evening. Before I jump into goal number four, I'd just like to, it's been a while since we updated you, so I wanted to talk about some of the big projects we had over the summertime. The first project was the decommissioning of the old Plymouth South High School. That actually started in the winter, spring of 2017. And what that involved was removing all the old technology in phases, redeploying into the new high school and providing minimal impact to the current high school's activities on day-to-day operations. In the June, we did the final decommissioning of the data center and removed all the remaining technology in old Plymouth South High School within a two-week period. This involved the inventory of equipment be repurposed, obsoleted, and stored. Next, we moved on to the new Plymouth South High School, which was quite an undertaking to get opened. It was a very successful opening. But just a little something about that school. Everything in that school is computerized, from TVs, projectors, doors, heating, lighting. Give you a quick little snapshot of some of the items in that school. We have 127 access points, 260 security cameras, 200 telephones, 24 file servers, state-of-the-art language lab, virtual desktops, and a media center and virtual high school. So it was, again, just a large, large project and, but very successful. I was very pleased with how it turned out. And the final summer project was the closing of the old Plymouth Town Hall. So what that meant for us was we had to respalce our wide-area network fiber into Plymouth North High School and then migrate our town hall data center also into Plymouth North High School. On top of that, we have our normal day-to-day activities in the summertime, which consists of preventative maintenance on all equipment, get it ready for the new school year, as well as we seem to have computer labs moving around from year to year to make room for additional classrooms. So, starting in on goal number four, data switches. Year three, we continue to upgrade the data switches, aging data switches in our district. This past fall, we upgraded the data switches in both middle schools. In the summer of 2018, coming up, we'll be upgrading some of our data switches in the elementary schools. Bandwidth, in the summer of 2017, we upgraded our 200-meg Internet circuit to a 2-gig circuit. And this coming summer, our 500-meg circuit's going to be upgraded to a gig circuit. So we have a lot more bandwidth than we have ever had before. And right now, of the total bandwidth, we probably utilize about 50% on a day-to-day basis. Wireless access points, year three, both high schools are new or upgraded. The summer of 2018, we'll be replacing all of our elementary school wireless access points. And in the future, we'll be addressing the middle schools. Mobile device management, year three, we're currently in the process of evaluating a mobile device management to work with our iPad devices. We hope to have that in place for the next school year, 2018, 19. Teacher devices, year three, we accomplished the goal of providing Chromebooks for every elementary faculty and laptops for sped faculty. At the same time, we also were able to deploy document cameras for every kindergarten teacher in the district. And we continue to add Chromebooks for student use as well. So currently, in the district, we're up to 3,300 Chromebooks for student usage. And centralized printing, although not always well-received, we are continuing to evaluate and migrate towards centralized printing in all of our schools, cut down on costs of ink, toner, so on. Any questions?
I don't really have a question, but my, I just wanted to say the presentation was fantastic and I really enjoyed the resources. I was like clicking through and I was like, Creative Commons, what is this? And I learned, I had no idea. I was like, I need to go take all of these classes that you're offering and I'm looking at the different standards and I was like, I know that, but I'm not really 100% sure I know that. So I think you could do some night classes. We'd all sign up, but I thought it was a great presentation, so thank you for the update.
Mr. Begley.
In the past, we talked about bring your own device. Have you guys looked into it and made a decision not to go down that road or where are we on that? You're all looking to Gary, so I guess.
You know, Mr. Begley, you bring up a point that we have been grappling with for quite some time. And I envision in the near future, maybe two to three years from now, we'll have an opportunity for students to bring their own device. And I think our biggest struggle is trying to make sense of the bandwidth requirements that we've had in the past. And I think our network upgrade, our bandwidth upgrade this summer really allowed us to kind of meet the need of what we had in place. One of the biggest dilemmas that we have now and what we'll have in the future when we actually make the decision to do one-to-one is, you know, do we allow a variable device or do we really focus on a Chromebook type of device so that we can have a uniform deployment? I think one of the issues that we have is we need to have a management system so when devices do come into the district that are not owned by the district, that there's a level of security and a level of understanding of what those devices are when they get on our network. So I think that's one of the things that Alan and I have talked about, is how do we make that happen? And what do we do to actually purchase the software necessary to be able to monitor these devices that come into play? We've also toyed with the idea of maybe having a device that the district sponsors. We don't purchase it. We sponsor it in the sense that, let's say, a Chromebook can be offered or purchased by a two-year lease by a family. So the family could actually get a device and they could actually bring it into school and we actually endorse the device that they brought. So we know it's going to work well on our network. We know there are parameters that we can set so it'll work on our network. So I think there are a number of key things in play. As Alan mentioned before, our bandwidth is about 50% utilized right now and I think that fluctuates based on the day. But I think for us to do that, I think we're going to have to just take a step in the water and try it. And I think that's something that we would like to do. One of the problems that we do have, and I think Alan realized this when we were moving forward with New Plymouth North, it was around that time where we decided that we would give kids access to bring their own device in a sense of try it out and it saturated our network. Because kids have more than one device. And I think that's one of the issues that we really need to kind of realize is, you know, how many IPs that our network is able to manage and the systems behind that to work. So, long answer to a short question, but I think to try to sum it up, I think in the next couple of years, I would love to offer the opportunity for kids to bring their own machines. And I think I would like to see it from, you know, grades five, grade six to grade 12. And I think that's what we will try to do. Again, there's going to be a level of partnership that I think we need to engage in with families and I think we need to be prepared to be able to offer them guidance on what they need to be doing to, you know, to support that model, whether they buy a machine, whether they lease a machine, and if we're part of that discussion. So some schools have done it. I think they've experienced some level of difficulty with some of the things that I've mentioned. We're a little bit bigger than most of the districts that are able to do it. But I think we can learn from their, from their model and move forward. But for the next year or so, I don't see that happening. I do see it happening in the next two to three years, though.
The big thing with bring your own device is potential cost savings.
Yes.
So one of the things that, looking into it, was going to turn up was, is that real? In other words, are we, do we have to do so many things to make it safe for someone to bring their own device and put it on our network? Now we have to buy network managing software, et cetera, security software, that it negates any savings that you, that you might realize. It's important, as we know that the technology's changing so rapidly and we have to constantly buy more and more Chromebooks and then stay up to date. That's where I was looking to see it. Do we actually look at it and say, okay, it's a misnomer to think you're going to save a lot of money by doing bring your own device because you're opening a can of worms?
Yeah.
And then just, and then just close down that whole discussion?
Well, you know, there's another factor. And you're absolutely right that there's a repetitive cost. There's a cyclical cycle that we, the cycle that we look at when we purchase machines. The dilemma that we have is even now, when it, and I hear it all the time from the schools, I heard it last week at South Middle School, is when MCAS comes around, the machines that we have available are gone. They can't be used by kids, they can't be, because they're dedicated for testing. So it takes a large chunk of devices off the table, which is really a dilemma for us. So I think your point of one-to-one, we have to do a really good job of investigating to see what that point of investment and pointer return really is beneficial for us, which we haven't done. That is something that we have not really put the time into, to do. And I think it really comes down to us having a department that's, and I don't want to, I don't like ever using the word overwhelmed, but I think our technology department on the hardware side is completely inundated with the kind of work that they need to be doing, especially with the new high school coming on board this last year. But I do believe, and that's something that Alan and I and Julia have talked about, and what do we have to do to kind of make this one-on-one thing either happen or not? And I think that'll be something that you'll be hearing moving forward. Because it is, if we can minimize our costs on technology, that would be great. But we will still have reoccurring costs for network supply, network maintenance, and licensing for technologies is very expensive and that really drives a technology budget.
Any other questions from committee members? All right, thank you very much, folks.
I'm going to pick up your glasses.
Oh, I thought we were taking it with me. If you control it, I won't be able to use it.
The Google Expedition, right?
Just as well, right? Yeah.
Mr. Dargy has one back there. Did you give Rich one?
He had one before.
All right, so we have to talk about the superintendent's goals because we're getting close to the time of the year when we do that evaluation of the superintendent. So Dr. May.
Yes, so tonight, let me give you an idea of what we have in front of you. And I know that, as you know, before the reorganization of the school committee and before the election, I gave you information regarding my goals. And I did hit the advance button for the agenda.
Yes.
And first, and hold on, let me just, hold on one second. Let me, let me get it to the right item for you. So what I did for you tonight is I provided a March update to my goals. And I will walk through each one of those to kind of give you an idea of where I am with the goals that I presented. I gave you an update in December and, you know, here's the March update. Keep in mind, as you begin to compile information regarding my evaluation, they are tied to my goals, but more importantly, I have a variety of documents that I've assembled, Nancy has actually assembled it today, of all the stuff that we've collected to support the goals that you have. And this document will live with Dr. Sorensen as he will probably be the one to compile my evaluation. But I will also provide a document like I have in the years past of a listing of all the things that have happened in my office to support the goals and other initiatives that have happened in the district. So you have a flavor of what's happened this year. It's been an extraordinary school year this year, outside of weather and challenges that we've had. But I will tell you that it's been a very rewarding school year with a lot of great things happening in our district. But the first goal that I had, and I think you've seen the evidence here in the school committee table with the school improvement plans and achievement data that we're beginning to infuse into our school improvement plans across the district. And this was a recommendation of the Department of Education audit that took place last year. And we made sure that we included this into the goals, my goals, so that we would ensure that these goals are included and monitored for our principals as well. The principal goals are really centered around using data and understanding student data around achievement so that they can have a really good understanding of what the gains or areas of improvement are in schools. And as you heard Principal Spencer talk tonight about the district assessments that they're using in the classroom and how they use that to gauge success or areas of improvement and how they're using that with MCAS data as well. And that those are areas that we want all our teachers to become extremely proficient in. But again, it starts with the principal, setting that as a goal for themselves. So not only are the goals set in my, in my evaluation, but it's also in the goals for every principal. So the principals do have these goals set in their, in their documents as well. So as of today, I have met with all our principals in the district through my evaluation process and they have a very strict guideline that their school improvement discussions and school improvement plans from this year forward will really take a strong look at how we use data to drive instruction. And you'll see more and more of that as schools come before you. But I think this year will be the pinnacle year that this will be included into all school improvement plans. And I have included that information into this document where Nancy has recently uploaded all of the school improvement plans onto the electronic school board so you can actually see the school improvement plans that have been submitted this year, free to review as time goes on. And that is something that we really hope to see improvement on, as well as the awareness of student data and how student data can drive achievement. I think that's really what the Department of Education was looking for, was documented evidence that this information is being shared and understood not only by our principals and the school councils, but how does that impact how a school operates with teachers in mind? So as you can see with this goal, this is something that we've talked about at length. I have also inserted into this document a listing of our principal coordinator-director meetings where this was on the agenda. So it's not only in our evaluation discussions with principals, but it's also part of our professional development that we work on two times a month with our principals, coordinators, and directors with a strong tie where our principals are really working and should be working with our coordinators for alignments in all disciplines so that there's a level of alignment there. So with that said, that's an update for the first goal. Dr. Sorensen, would you like me to stop at this one for comments or would you like to just go through them all at the same time?
Let's see, any questions, clarification on goal number one? Okay, moving on to the next one.
Okay, goal number two is, you know, last year, we had an audit by the state for a lot of our different operations and programs in the Costa District. This year, we were selected to entertain the Coordinator Program Review. The Coordinator Program Review took place between the 22nd and 26th of January of this year. And we have actually successfully gone through the audit and we have not received the review And we have actually successfully gone through the audit, and we have not received the review document as of yet. Now, keep in mind that this review is a strong overview of our special education programs in the district. It also is a career vocational technical education review. So, their findings, they had an exit interview with us when they left, and they only gave one recommendation, and that was career and vocational technical education. And they recommended strongly that we reshape our elective courses for vocational education, that we are sure that, and we need to ensure that students are not part of the certificate program. They need to be completely identified as separate, and they are taken as electives. And they didn't want to have any confusion between students that are taking it for certificate and students that might be in there as an elective course. So, we've already begun working on that, and that is a recommendation. That is the only recommendation that they gave on the exit interview. So, we don't have a lot of evidence to support how we did, other than that one anecdotal suggestion, which is something that we've already been working on. As soon as that document is available, we will make it available to the school committee. They typically submit a draft report to my office, which would come out maybe a month before, which I have not seen. As soon as that's available, I will share it with the committee, so you can actually get an idea of how we did on that review. Within the book of evidence, you will see a number of documents in preparation for the Coordinator Program Review, so you can see the scope and breadth of what it takes to actually go through the review. It's voluminous documents that we have collected. A lot of them are online. We're not able to give the school committee access to the online repository that the Department of Education manages. But what we did is we printed out the index, the online index, to see the amount of documents that were submitted in preparation for this review. So, that is something that you will have when you actually take a look at this particular goal.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Can we prod them a little, like, see how close they are to getting that draft to us? Because it's not just this school district, every school district is doing their evaluations now. And this is obviously an important input.
We could. I had read somewhere that they would come out in May.
Yes, that's the hope, that they will be out in May. That's what they told us. So, we do have a liaison that Assistant Superintendent Frye has been working with. We can reach out to them to see if they can give us an update on the, or give us a status report on when we can expect the first draft of that. I will tell you that I've been very supportive of the initial draft documents that the Department of Education has sent to us, because I kind of, if they find that there's an area of concern or an area of strength, I want to understand what they are. We have really not disputed anything the Department of Education has sent forth, because they have suggested there's evidence to support the claim. So, if we do have a draft, I have no problem sharing that with the school committee, so they can get a sense of where we are with this particular goal, as soon as I get it.
This has to be done?
I know.
At the seventh.
Yeah. Well, the same, we had the same problem last year.
But our evaluation of the superintendent?
No, this book's a new.
No, this is new. I just did this to give you a lot of evidence.
That's good, actually, yeah.
But they have not, last year, they, I think we got the report late. It was into the summer almost. So, if you look back to my goals from last year, we were unable to have an inclusive or conclusive report from them.
You still have to do bad, though.
Yeah.
But that's exactly why I'm asking, if we can.
Well, I hear that Assistant Superintendent Frye has a connection.
Yes.
So, perhaps we could take Mr. Bagley's comments along with your phone call.
Yeah. And what we can do is I'll have her reach out to them this week to see if there's an anticipated timeline of delivery.
And encouragement of need to get it.
But the school committee is anxious to review that.
Get to work on it.
Yes.
Okay.
And we will do that, all right?
Number three?
Number three, this is the goal that I had this year, to try to look at things differently throughout the district. And this is really based on the theme for opening day. As you remember, I had the opportunity for teachers to sign up and, for lack of a better word, win an opportunity for me to go in and work in their classrooms. I have, my latest experience was at Plymouth South Middle School last week, and I taught, that's my love, actually, and I taught sixth grade, fifth grade, actually, for three hours. And it was an awesome experience for me. But I have included in this document lesson plans that I have, the teachers have provided for me to work on in class. There's also a series of thank you letters from Indian Brook Elementary, where I really felt, I really prepared for the lesson, and I told them that I expect that they'll master the content, because they want me to come back, and I would love to go back. But I put them in here for you to review what their thoughts were as I was in the classroom. But it's been a great experience to not only see children active, working in our schools, but to actually see the things that we discuss here at the table and how they're implemented. It's been a great experience for me. I don't know, it's taken a lot of scheduling, and it's been a difficult proposition, because all the weather delays, and it really throws off the schedule. And it's really been the hardest ones to schedule the high schools, because of the double block, the two-period, the 90-minute classes, which make it really difficult, especially if I arrange one day and the next day the schedule's completely different. I just can't make it up. So, just to give you an idea, I will be done, they're all scheduled. I'm about 60% through, something like that, with all our schools. But I anticipate in the next month or so, I should be complete.
By early May.
By early May, I'll be done. But.
I didn't realize that was such an all-year project, yeah.
Well, it shouldn't be. But it's just the scheduling with my schedule, the school's schedule, and the weather. You know, I'm all over the place, Marge, and I think you realize that, contrary to some belief out in the community. But I do try to get out to do as much as I can. But this has been somewhat of a challenge to get to the schools. But, you know, it's been a great experience.
Any questions?
Mr. Bagley? On this one. This was a great one. This was one we were all looking forward to. I know you were as well. Are you going to provide some sort of a write-up, summary write-up of some of the things to the specific, the reason why you were doing this?
Yes.
So, in other words, to get a perspective on school operations and classroom dynamics? Tell us what you learned, what you found out. Did everything work the way you expected, or did you get there and have aha moments, you know, epiphanies? I want to hear that kind of feedback, rather than, you know.
Sure.
Logistics, have you just had the meetings?
Sure, I think the issue, the biggest issue that I see in our district is, not issue, but revelation really, is the diversity of our student populations across the board. And I will write comments to some of the things that I witnessed that have changed dramatically since I taught, which is really different. You know, from the rigor of the curriculum to the diverse needs of the students that I had the opportunity to work with. I mean, really diverse, very diverse. So, I think those are some of the things that I'll include in that.
Yeah, that's important, to hear that, get that kind of feedback, because you had this experience, and now we want to learn from the experience.
Well, when you talk to the teachers and they say that there's a great deal of social, emotional need in the district, I have the opportunity to recite it and cite it for you, so you can have a good understanding through my eyes of what I've experienced myself.
Right.
Before we actually move off that part of the topic, Dr. Mayestus, if you're going to provide, as Mr. Bagley just requested, any additional language about this goal, I'll be telling the committee shortly when their write-up needs to get back to me. So, if you're going to provide something, it has to be done in the next week or so.
Oh, absolutely. This is, I expect this to be done really quickly.
Okay.
All right, moving over to goal four. And this is one school that, or one goal that was a huge undertaking by the district from my office and for me personally. This was the prevention program that we engaged with, with Beth Israel Deaconess. Beth Israel actually funded this, worked with Dr. Conrad from the University of Montreal to come in and train a number of our staff to be able to offer prevention. To give you an update, there are numbers there that need to be filled in, and I will provide that information as I speak here. I was running the data today. We had about 99% of our students in eighth grade participate in the SERP survey. And the SERP survey is a survey that identifies at-risk nature for substance abuse. And that survey actually identifies four tendencies that we really, Dr. Conrad from the University of Montreal developed this program to really work with those traits, to really teach kids to be resilient and really work with their personality traits. We had about 20% of our eighth grade population could benefit from prevention, based on the data. And what I will, what I will share with you is the actual data on the students, but it won't have names. So, it'll be available for you to take a look at what the data says about our students, which is very enlightening. About 20% of our student population actually could benefit from the prevention training. That's eighth grade. And that is true. I mean, we wanted to see if Dr. Conrad's estimates, based on her research, would pan out, and they were, everything that she had spelled out in her research since 1989 was actually on target, every single area. I was thinking that the number one area would be sensation-seeking, but like I mentioned to you before, I believe it was anxiety. So, the highest need in our student population, which is very common around the world, not just in Plymouth, she said from the beginning, it's going to be anxiety. And absolutely, that's what the data demonstrated. So, we trained all the students that actually, so the 99% of students in Plymouth, actually, we got permission for them to be surveyed. And of the 20% of students that actually were identified that could use the training, only 70 students were eligible to actually receive the training, because parents then signed the consent form for us to work with them. Okay? So, all the students, all 70 students have been trained, and we were able to accomplish that in the last month. So, it's.
How many trainings was there?
There were four trainings that went on at the same time for all traits, and that was for two different days that we did. It was six out, it's basically 180 minutes per group. Yeah, so it was four groups running at the same time here at PCIS. So, we brought the South Middle kids over to PCIS, and we ran them in, on Wednesday, the preschool, because they have parent conferences or parent outreach on Wednesday. So, we used the preschool classrooms to do it, so they would be all on their own, and so we could use those four classrooms, and it worked out very, very well. It went very well. I enjoyed that. I was a trainer myself, I'm trained to offer the program. I actually sent my, in order to become certified, moving forward in the program, you have to send a recording of your training to Dr. Conrad to be evaluated. So, I sent a voice recording to Dr. Conrad, and she evaluated my first piece. I can actually send you what her comments were. And then I'm sending her my second one that I did last week to give feedback. So, every training has two trainers in it. There's the lead trainer, which I was a lead trainer, and then there was a facilitator that helped timing, because it's very strict that they're 90-minute sessions, and we want to keep the timing accurate. So, we were actually very satisfied with the trainings. We debriefed as a team after the trainings last week. And I might add that I have done a number of presenting on this topic at a number of forums, and you can see the different areas that I presented on the prevention program. But I, there's one meeting here, that's the fourth bullet down, and I provided a presentation to the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office in Boston on January 29th. We were notified shortly after that meeting, about a month after that meeting, that the Attorney General's Office has adopted the prevention program to be a state model, and they're going to come up with a grant to be able to offer this to schools around the Commonwealth. So, you know, it has a lot of great promise. I think one of the things that we will continue to do is provide information on parents, so that they can feel more comfortable, the children working with us on this model. We did a lot, I did a parent forum, I did outreach, both principals called parents. And the number one factor that prohibited kids or families from thinking that they could participate is that they didn't want the stigma of their child being pulled out of class to go to a training of this nature. So, as a result of that, I've discussed this with Beth Israel, and Beth Israel is going to work with the school district to offer an after-school training at Beth Israel for the students that their families did not want them to participate during the school day. We're going to do a training for the students that, some of the, we're going to put it out there, invite them again, and have it run at Beth Israel on campus at Beth Israel. So, that's something that we're going to do next.
Otherwise, you'd lose 30%.
We're going to lose, we'll lose a lot of the kids that could actually benefit.
So, of the 70 students who participate in the training, this question's really not about your evaluation, but longitudinally, does the program have a measure a year out or two years or three years out, tracking those same students?
I actually, Dr. Sorensen, I introduced a model of social-emotional monitoring that will monitor the kids in this program that took this. It will monitor their attendance, their discipline, health office visits, and grades. So, we can actually see how they're performing and how they're transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade, and how they're making their way through the high school years. So, that system is up and running. And I think you would be very interested to see how counselors and principals are using that data to actually progress-monitor the kids that are going through the program.
Yeah, I think that's good, but I was asking for something a little bit more didactic. Is there a measure? And if there was a measure to get into the program?
Sure.
Is there a measure to get out of the program?
There isn't.
There isn't?
There is not.
Ms. Badger?
Sorry. It's not really like a getting out of the program, it's like life skill building, from when I went to the presentation. So, I think it's creating those coping mechanisms, if that's the appropriate word, for them to learn. So, if they get in those situations where their anxiety or other things were triggered, that they could then know how to kind of model their behavior to make, manage their behavior to make it kind of.
Yeah, I like, I agree with you. But there should be a measure two years out or three years out, that tells us they have those coping skills, so therefore we know prevention actually works.
I think, what was it, the furthest they tracked there, people were like five or six years. They couldn't do it very long, just based on when people kind of dispersed into the world, and, but.
One of the, we asked that question of Dr. Conrad, and she was very specific on the answer. In order to do that, you have to enter into a research study. And a research study has different ramifications on permissions. It makes it more difficult to offer it, because you have to go through a review board and things of that nature. So, she said you can do the follow-up surveys and things of that nature, but then you have just entered into a research project.
But I would just say this, and we can get off this topic. There are really standardized measures for anxiety that we can give to eighth graders and give that same standardized measure of anxiety to a 12th grader. It's the same measure, and just compare the scores.
And that's possible, that we could look at that. The issue that, and the way that it was described to me is, I'll use myself as an example. I'm a sensation seeker, I scored a 21.
Shocking.
Okay? Twenty-one's high. That didn't, that probably was, and Dr. Conrad explained it to me, that that 21 was probably a 21 when you were 16, 17. But it's how you understand yourself in a different way to manage. So, the outcome on that particular survey probably isn't going to change that much. It's going to be more, if we had a survey of kids before they entered the program, on how they saw themselves managing themselves, and two or three years. how they saw themselves managing themselves, and two or three years out, and if they had a scenario and situations, what would they do differently based on their interactions with the program, which might help us to understand if that really is working.
Okay. Ms. Badger.
I just have a clarifying question for, so that, you said 70 students were eligible to, that's a 20% number?
No.
Or that's 70, 70 of the 20%?
70 students of the 20% participated.
So how many students, or like, would it have been if you got all 20?
180-something. There's a, it's a large number. There's a large number of kids.
Well, it would be 20% of the eighth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was wondering.
Basically 20% of the eighth grade. It's about 180 students.
Okay.
And, and that's the data that you can see, and you can see their scores by area.
Okay.
So you can actually see how many in each, for each area, like sensations-seeking, impulsivity, anxiety. Yep.
All right, Goal Four.
Goal Four.
Five.
Five, actually. Sorry.
Five, sorry.
I think you got a little bit of a preview from Julia Colby on the website, which has been a significant undertaking. And one of the things that we realized prior to this goal was the compliance nature that we have with ADA and accessibility. And we, this is something that every school district in Massachusetts is going through. If you have a website and, you know, you use it to communicate at a high level like we do, you need to make sure that there are a lot of compliance issues that have been resolved, and our new website will meet all the ADA compliant issues that have been identified. And as Julia mentioned tonight, there's a, a very interesting rollout that we're going to entertain, and I'll make sure that the school committee will be on that first and have an opportunity to look at it. It'll, this website has a number of features that our current website does not have. It actually will be the single repository for all information that comes out. So Twitter, Facebook, even the newsletter is sent out from the same entity. So right now, we use Constant Contact. That'll eventually go away, and this will, it'll be one entity for sending everything out of the district. So it, the website is really the hub for all activity that is social media or even internet-based for communication purposes. But it has been a significant undertaking, because every single department and every single program in the district has actually migrated all of their information into the new website, which is something that's been pretty enlightening. But it's, you should see a, a different look, different feel. Some of the same information, but it's all been upgraded, so I think you'll enjoy seeing this. Like Julia said, this will be released in the next week or so, and I will send you an email, so you can actually go on there and kind of poke around a little bit and see what you think.
This is the Goal, the Goal Five, you're talking?
Yes.
Well, when you go down a little ways, it gives the December Goal Four progress statement, so I was wondering why that's under five.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, Marge, I don't know. You picked something up?
It's like it should be up with Goal Four.
Under, under where it says Goal Statement District Improvement Five, down below it says December 2017, Goal Four Progress Statement.
Yeah, you know what it is.
Goal Five is under Goal Six, too.
Goal Four, Goal Four is, Goal Four isn't numbered, if you follow it. Progress statement for Goal Four isn't, but it is, it's, yep. I think I got, it's a formatting issue.
Yeah, apparently.
Yeah, it was a formatting issue.
All right, go on.
But that's easy to take care of. So that's, that's Goal, Goal Five.
Goal Five one is under the Goal Six one.
Yeah. So that's Goal, that's Goal Five. And again, by next week, you'll see the website will be up and running, and you'll have an opportunity to see that.
I know there were six goals before.
Yeah, we, we actually added a goal, Margie, this year, because there was a desire of the school committee to ensure that we had the school improvement plan, student achievement data included into my goals, to ensure that that would be taken care of, based on the audit that we had last year. So we came back after my initial goal presentations, and I added that goal after, I can't even remember when it was, it was sometime in October. Yep. And the last one was really working with South High School. I think the solar project and the fields will take us to completion of the project. We're looking at being on time in August of finishing the school. We hope by, when you drive down that campus drive in September, everything will be completely done. We may have some delays with, you know, some of the lighting pieces, but it all depends on how things come together with all the agreements that we need to have signed. I don't see that there'll be small adjustments as we move forward, but we're moving along quite nicely. Our budget as projected at town meeting last year, and that contingency that we had available, those dollars are still available to help offset the costs that we were anticipating for the fields. So our, our model of turf and our model of lighting that we put forth last year is working out as planned. So I anticipate that, you know, come down September, we should be, we should be ready for the opening of the school year. An August timeline, and September, opening new fields, and all our, the driveway with this final coat of pavement, and all that stuff should be done. So, but I tell you, it's taken a lot of effort from a lot of people in this district to actually get this thing done. But we're, you heard tonight, we finally got the solar, first phase of the solar agreement hammered out, and I believe we should move forward with the rest of it. Okay?
Questions on that last goal, Plymouth South High School goal? The, you know, the, the parking lots, solar panels are in the hands of Eversource at this point, from what we're being told.
Yes.
So that could sit there quite a while.
Yeah.
And they've had a tough winter as well.
They have, they have.
They have, yeah.
So I think one of the things that we're really working on is the rooftop solar is a lot more attainable, and it was probably the lower-hanging fruit that we could actually go after. And I think that's the first one that we need to be able to achieve. The next one will be the canopy's and the battery. But we believe that the lighting piece is going to move along in time for September. So the lighting is almost the fourth of, of four projects. But we believe that September, that's going to happen. The, the only, the only agreement that has to be signed by this, by the, or approved by the Board of Selectmen will be the rooftop lease, because everything else has been approved by town meeting prior, in prior meetings. Okay?
Any other, any other questions on that, on Dr.'s? Maestas' presentation here. So to the committee, I just want to sort of give us a little bit of an outline here. Now, now, in your packages this evening, on that agenda item was the student attendance evaluation report, the one that we're familiar with every single year that we get. There are like three sections. The first section I'll complete after I get each individual response. Each committee member needs to fill out the sections relative to the goals that we just went over. And then each committee member has to fill out the last two pages relative to instructional leadership, management, operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then I will take all of that information and create a compendium that we will present. And I'm going to present that, the results of your evaluation of the superintendent, on the 7th of May, which will be the last meeting before the local elections. So you all have that evaluation instrument in your packages tonight. I would like you to get it back to me by the next meeting, which is the 23rd. So you're getting it on the 2nd, get it back to me on the 23rd, and on the 7th, we'll present the results. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Dr. Maestas?
What I will do in the next week, I will provide a listing of all the other things that have happened, along with the information, to give you an overview of my classroom instruction.
Great.
Kind of give you an idea. Okay.
And that'll be sent to us through email.
Yes, yes. It'll be sent to all of you, and you can use it.
Any questions from anybody on that? Okay. Do we need a motion to go past 10 o'clock, because we're past 10 o'clock?
It's 10:30.
10:30. We won't go past 10:30.
Crank it up now, crank it up.
Let's pick this up. All right. Fundraisers, please, any report on fundraising. This is the end of the year report. Yes?
I'm not, I'm going to go quick, I promise. Going through the fundraiser report, I just want to make a, a quick comment that it seems like PCIS pretty much has got it right, as far as the ROI on a lot of these fundraisers. So I don't know if, you know, they, I know we've talked about this before, talk to each other. I really hope they're able to do the carnival again, because it seemed to bring in about $9,000.
A lot of money. Yeah. How much?
So I think it was about nine, they think they spent 13, and they took back nine. So it was, it's pretty good. But they also had their magazine drive. I mean, they paid out 13, and they, it was good ROI, it's all in there. It's on, 13 went out, but nine came back. So that's a really good, I think it's like a 68% return on investment.
But those numbers are backwards. You mean nine went out and 13?
No, well, yeah, I'm sorry. They collected nine.
It was, we're making a loss.
Well, you know, you know what I mean.
Like the 13% payout.
You know what I mean. And then they had another one, their magazine drive, I think, was like another $3,000 or $4,000. So it just seems like going through that I tried to compare the schools and see how they did, and I think that they're, they're clearly the winner on this, so. Just, just a comment.
I just wonder if it's like, if it's the communication back home, because one thing I've heard from some parents at the elementary level is, what are these fundraisers for? They just don't know. So maybe we could get some insight from PCS and see what they're doing.
They do say on this chart what the money's going towards.
Right, I know, but I'm just, what I hear in public and from parents in the community, what I'm hearing is, but we just don't know, what are, what are they for? I mean, I'll, you know, raise money and sell Yankee candles, but what is it going to?
Yep.
That's just what I've heard, the clarification.
That's a good point. I'm wondering if at some point at the end of the school year, we could just get an executive summary of things that were purchased through, not everything, but a handle on what was purchased in the different schools through the different fundraisers.
I think if it's, you know, for a bench at the school, or it's something really, you know, important for the kids. If parents knew, they'd be more inclined to participate.
A lot of those are PTA, so there could be a report from the PTA of what they did with expenditures, because the majority of these...
They should have that at the end of the year. They should do a report, they should send it out.
We'll look at that, see if we can get you, get something to the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important, that the parents know.
But I think what Mr. Selly is saying, though, before they go and spend their money on a fundraiser, if they know what it's going to, they might be more apt to do it, right?
The problem with that is sometimes they don't know what it's going to. They raise some money, and then maybe a month later, it'll give Chromebooks to the school, or give a TV for the lobby or something. So at the time of the fundraiser, they don't know what it's going towards.
Right.
Well, then clarify that. The goal would be X, Y, or Z. I think the more that the parents know, I mean, it's inevitably all going to something good, right? But just, you know, to maybe give them a little bit of something to look forward to, I think you might get more involvement. So let's see what they do here at PCIS and relate that to the other schools.
Okay, moving on then. Reports and proposals from committee members.
I'll be quick. I attended the All Town Strings concert here at Plymouth North High School, and it was a great concert, and you could see the farm teams really building. The, the fourth and fifth graders had a huge group, and so we have, we look forward to them going through the ranks. So it was, it was a great, a great evening. The place was packed, so.
Excellent, thank you for that report. Other, other reports and proposals. Mr. Ba, Ms. Hunt?
So we already mentioned that I attended the March for Our Lives, but I also went to the PYDC presentation, the community forum for PYDC. And that was good, it was good, good to meet the new director and, and hear. One of their goals, it looks like, and the reason that they had that meeting is they want more parents involved. So I suggested that they do reach out to the PTAs in, in the community and maybe start there, but that's, that seems to be, they've got everybody sitting at the table, and I was a parent representative before I was on the school committee to PYDC years ago. They've got everybody sitting at the table, but they're lacking parents right now, so that's, that seems to be what they're looking for.
Ms. Badger?
I totally forgot. So the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, we have, if anybody is interested, I know it's the same night that the Plymouth UK is dinner for the, our delegates or whatever we're referring to them as, our teachers. But the Plymouth Area Collaborative is having interviews for the next director on Thursday night at seven in their, at their office in Pembroke. So if anybody's interested, I am doing my best to be there, but I have a work commitment, so I'm trying to figure out how I can do both, split myself in half or something, figure it out.
Ms. Hunt?
Just one more thing that I forgot about, the distinguished visitors committee. We didn't, we weren't able to meet this week, but just to let everybody know, I did reach out to the five people that we identified to be on our subcommittee, and so far, I've heard back from three of the five that they'd be happy to, to serve on that committee. So it's coming along. I've sent the other two a re, I've reached out to them again, so hopefully I'll get an answer soon.
Okay. Anything else under this agenda item? Next one is a report from PYDC. I don't think there was a meeting?
No, they'll be on the 13th.
And then the next one is the Building Committee?
Yeah, the Building Committee, we had a special meeting last Wednesday night.
Executive session?
Executive session. So I can't make a report on it, but anyway, we did have the meeting, and our next Building Committee meeting will be on the 12th.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Burgess. Okay, now Personnel, please.
Yes, there were no appointments, leaves, or resignations to report this evening.
We're moving now.
All right, we have one homeschool plan this evening?
Yes, Dr. Sorensen, we have one homeschool plan submitted this evening. It has been, has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office and has met the guidelines set forth by the school committee for approval. I recommend approval.
Ms. Hunt?
I move that the home education plan be accepted and approved as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question on that motion? All right. Would you please vote for it or against it?
Please vote.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Dr. Maestas? Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt?
Okay. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary and Warrant for Review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S040518, dated April 5th, 2018, in the amount of $902,995.82, as presented.
Ms. Tressely is the second on that? Is there a question on that motion? Okay. Everybody voted in favor? And now we have some books to dispose. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, we do have some books to dispose, and these are books that are outdated, and they're, they're going to be replaced, and these are books from PCS, South Middle, North, and South. And these will be donated for disposal, for removal, actually.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I move that we dispose of the obsolete books as recommended by the...
All right, we have the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Tressely is the second on that motion. Is there a question on that motion? All right, I don't see any hands, so we'll vote for it or against it. Everybody voted in favor of that motion. Is there any other business that come before the school committee this evening? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.